Good evening. Our city clerk has an announcement that she will make prior to beginning of the council meeting. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Beginning June 15th, the City of Grand Terrace reopened its public meetings. Therefore, tonight's meeting of August 25th is now open to the public. Please be advised that face masks are required, social distancing will be practiced, and occupancy limits will be enforced. Additionally, pursuant to Section 3 of the executive order N29-20 issued by Governor Newsom on March 17th, tonight's meeting will also be conducted telephonically through Zoom and broadcast live on the city's website and Channel 3. If you would like to participate telephonically and speak on an agenda item, you can access the meeting by dialing *671* 669-900-9128 and enter meeting ID 891-7361-1726 and enter password 242-463. You will be placed in the waiting room muted until it is your turn to speak. You may also submit your comments by sending them to CC@publiccomment@grandterres-ca.gov. The City of Grand Terrace thanks you for taking all precautions to prevent spreading COVID-19 virus.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. So at this time, I'll call to order the regular meeting for the City of Grand Terrace for August 25th, 2020. If you would, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Those who can stand, please do.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen?
Present.
Councilmember Hussey?
Present.
Councilmember Robles?
Present.
Mayor Protem Wilson?
I'm here.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. All right. We'll begin tonight with a special presentation. The topic is the Fire Protection District 5 and the Measure U that is going to be on the ballot in November. San Bernardino County Fire Chief Dan Muncy is here with us tonight, and Deputy Chief of Administration Bert Raul Washington, and they will be giving us a presentation and overview this evening.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me okay with my microphone?
And if I turn the microphone on, it even helps a little bit better. Thank you very much, sir.
Even better. But you were good without the microphone, almost.
Well, thank you very much. I would like to introduce Bert Washington, who's our Deputy Chief Administration. Chief Washington joined us recently. He was the City of Pasadena Fire Chief. Prior to that, he was the Clark County Fire Chief. Prior to that, he was Assistant Chief in Las Vegas Fire and Rescue. We couldn't be any prouder to have his skills and expertise. He's excellent when it comes to the administration side of the Fire Department. In the City of Pasadena, he took the city to an ISO 1, which is Assurance Service Office 1. That means that everybody's insurance rates went down while he was there. And he also, more importantly, took the City of Pasadena Fire Department through an accreditation. Those of you may be familiar with accreditation, that hospitals go through or schools. And what it is, is looking at the best practices in the industry and benchmarking yourself for continuous improvement. So Chief Washington was hired for those very special skills and to create transparency in our district to ensure that the public has a lot of trust in our Fire Department, have a lot of clarity in our Fire Department, and they really understand the ingenuity and the technology advancements that we're making on a daily basis. So Chief Washington, thank you for being with us here tonight. You also know Chief Mahia, your Fire Chief in the corner back there, and Mr. Duffy. I asked Chief Mahia if he was going to give the presentation, and he said, "Oh, no, Mr. Duffy." He said, "You need to give it." So thank you for allowing me the honor. I'm going to go through a funding workshop that we did in front of the Board of Supervisors on May 19th, 2020. I did tailor this presentation slightly to include the City of Grand Terrace. In addition, I'm going to include some actual revenues that are raised in the City of Grand Terrace that are not going to be in my slides, but I'll give those to you verbally so you understand the revenue and expenses a little bit better for our fire station 23 that's in the city. Is there a clicker, or can I have someone advance this slide, please? Thank you, sir. I want to give a quick overview of the Fire District's budget. The Fire District is broken down into five administrative zones. This is the Mountain, North Desert, South Desert Valley, and the Administrative Special Operations. Now, the important thing to remember in these zones is the money that's raised in these zones must be spent in the zones. So we are in the Valley Zone here in Grand Terrace, which means that the money that's raised in the Valley, the revenues, must be spent in the Valley. We cannot send any of that money to the Mountains or the South Desert or North Desert. The Administrative Special Operations is encompassing over the entire district, and it's more than just administration. It does Special Operations, which is our helicopter program, our hand crew programs, all the wildland things that we do. Our community risk reduction comes out of there. Our Training Division and our Emergency Medical Services all come out of that zone. Let's focus on the Valley. In the Valley, this is all the way from the City of Upland through Grand Terrace, San Bernardino, Mentone, Muskoye, Rosina Ranch, Bloomington, DeVeau, Muskoye are all included in this. There is 44, almost $45 million in property taxes. In addition, we received $32 million in a fee, and that's mainly from the City of Fontana, who contracts with the Fire District. We've not received any property taxes in the City of Fontana. Instead, the city pays us to provide fire protection there, and that contracts about $32.6 million. We received zero general fund for the Valley areas. We do have an FP5 special tax, which is about $14.7 million. There's a total of $92 million in revenue in the Valley Service Zone. I want to spend a little bit and talk about FP5. As you mentioned, Measure U, which will be the repeal for FP5, and how FP5 funds for the district. Now, it's important to remember, as a Fire Chief, I cannot advocate for or against a tax measure. I'm not here to do so tonight. I'm just here to present the funding of the district and demonstrate how the funding is spent. Initially, FP5 was voter-approved by the citizens of Hellendale and Silver Lake. Does anybody know where Hellendale-Silver Lake is? Way out in the middle of the desert. It's in between Victorville and Barstow. And the community there decided they wanted a fire station, but the tax revenues couldn't pay for the fire station. So the community passed a special tax with a two-thirds vote for FP5, and they placed a parcel tax on all the parcels in that Community Service District. That special tax is the same one that we use today. Initially started at about $137, I think it was, and it increased 3% per year. Not every year did it increase. I think two or three years now, it did not increase 3%, but every other year since it was passed, it did. Next, we had four cities join our Fire Protection District. They weren't part of our Fire District until they joined. Those were Needles, 29 Palms, San Bernardino, and Upland. And each one of those joined a little bit differently. When Needles joined us, they didn't have enough money in property tax, so they also annexed into that FP5 district so they could have that parcel tax to help pay for their fire station. They have one fire station out there. 29 Palms had zero property tax for fire protection, and so when they annexed, they did it into FP5 as well. And all the money they received for their one fire station is FP5. There's zero property tax to pay for fire protection. And San Bernardino, as you're well aware, they were going through a bankruptcy, and the City of San Bernardino could no longer afford to pay for fire protection. So they reduced their capital outlay of about $8 million. So they kept $8 million of that property tax, they gave the rest of the property tax to the county fire, and then they annexed into FP5 to help pay for it. Upland and San Antonio Heights did roughly the same thing. So there's a total of the LAFCO-approved annexations of about 11 point, or excuse me, 13, almost $14 million. And then last year, or about a year and a half ago, the board approved an FP5 expansion, which affected us here in Grand Terrace. That expansion meant that not only the voter-approved Hellendale and the LAFCO-approved districts, but the entirety of the Fire District would now be paying, would be annexed into FP5, and everybody would be paying that parcel tax, which is almost $158 at this point. So that brings a grand total of our FP5 revenue breakdown of about $41.5 million. So the repeal of FP5 is that $41.5 million right there, or almost $41.5 million that we'll be voting on in this upcoming November election. Talk a little bit about operations, and I'm really going to focus here on the Valley. Your Fire Department, I think it's a misnomer that Fire Departments are playing checkers and responding to fires. I've never seen a checker game in my life in a fire station or chess. I recently wrote a paper that was published for the National Fire Academy that described what a firefighter does every single day, and the aim of the paper was to define, "At what point are you so busy that you need to add additional firefighters?" And that was something, believe it or not, never been defined in the history of the fire service. But as you look at the tasks that must be accomplished, it's a lot more than just responding to calls. We take a minute and talk about some of the calls we respond to. We respond to aircraft incidents, and you might think, "Well, we don't have an airport here in Grand Terrace." But remember, airplanes are indiscriminate on where they crash. In Upland, just a few months ago, we had an airplane land on top of a house, caught the house on fire. Unfortunately, the pilot died, but we were able to save the family. Big rig families or big rig fires we see here in the city is especially out on our freeways, but also is their interior in the city. We conduct business inspections. We do cave rescues. There's none of those in Grand Terrace that I know of. Does anybody know differently? Do you live in Grand Terrace? You would know if there was a cave. He does not know of a cave. We do cliff rescues. We do high rescue, angle rescues, commercial structure fire, fire cause investigation. We fight a lot of forest fires. Those of you who lived in the city know all about the mountain that stands behind us, and it seems to burn on a regular basis and the response that's required to mitigate that. We respond to hazardous materials incidents. These are the chemicals that are spilled out of the big rigs that are sometimes spilled at residences or businesses, or often just left on the side of the road as a commercial user decides not to pay for the waste handling fees and instead just dumps it. We do high angle and tower rescues, ice rescues, medical aids, multi-casualty incidents, and many more things than just responding to fires. As I did my paper and looked at the time, though, I looked at, "How much time do we spend on medical aids?" And by far, the vast majority of the calls, 74% are responding to medical aids. But when you look at the time spent on each call, it's not 74% of a firefighter's time on a medical aid. One fire requires up to five or six different apparatus. There's a lot more time spent on fires than you would think that that affects us. And then preparing for the incidents and making sure that we're doing our DMV checks, meeting our state federal and local, CAL/OSHA and federal OSHA guidelines take time each day. If FP5 were repealed, we would absolutely need to make cuts. Here in the Valley, there's 23 fire stations that are not under contract. Remember, I said the City of Fontana is under contract. We would need to close eight fire stations. I'm not here today to propose a plan on which fire stations would be closed. I think that's premature. But we use very sophisticated software that studies where the calls are, where the probability of future calls are going to be. It looks at response times. It looks at the classifications and the priorities of calls, and it makes recommendations for where those closures may occur. Our firefighters, to just give you a perspective of are our firefighters busy or not, here in the Valley, the blue line shows that each firefighter responds to 232 calls on average per year. Now, in actuality, that's not true. They respond to three or four or more times that amount. This is broken down just in average per firefighter, but firefighters work as a team. On a structured fire, single-family residents, we have 21 firefighters that are required in order to put that structured fire out. A lot of those requirements are for federal or state regulations. But on average, our Valley firefighters are on about 232 incidents per year. With an FP5 closure, that number goes up to about 300. For perspective, I've added Inchino Valley, Ontario, Rancho, Apple Valley, and Colton. And you'll see, Inchino Valley, on average, each firefighter responds to 88 calls per year. In Ontario, 145. Rancho, 145. Apple Valley is fairly busy, 229. And Colton, 180. So with FP5 and station closures, the firefighters will be responding to a lot of calls. Now, I know one thing. When I go talk to our firefighters, they want to work, and they tell me all the time, "Chief, some of our busier stations in San Bernardino, matter of fact, are the busiest in the nation." And they say, "Chief, it's okay. We can run these calls." But I'm not worried about them having the ability to run the calls. I'm worried about what do they stop doing if all they're doing is running calls? And firefighters need to do more than just responding to incidents, and the biggest thing that I'll mention is that we need to do community risk reduction. My job, as I stand before you, isn't to respond to the 150,000 calls that our district responds to every single year. Those are all failures. My jobs prevent those calls from happening. Fire prevention, community risk reduction, visiting the schools, educating our children on fire safety are the important things that firefighters should be doing, preventing these incidents from occurring. As you're busier and busier and busier, you're not, you're no longer able to do that. You're no longer able to train as much. Those things worry me. In the Valley, we have an average response time of 4 minutes and 42 seconds. That's within what it should be in the Valley right now. With the loss of FP5, on average, that would be 5 minutes 47 seconds. Remember, this also includes the contract in Fontana, which is very robust. Fontana has very good fire protection. They pay for very good fire protection. As you start closing the eight stations, the City of Fontana will remain the same, and it affects us a little bit differently. So I'm going to look at, this here shows our current staffing level. We have 623 firefighters. With a reduction in FP5, we would have 457, and it shows the various ranks that would be affected. Roughly 50 captains, 50 engineers, and 50 firefighter positions would need to be cut with the repeal of FP5. So I'm going to skip ahead to Grand Terrace real quick, and then I'm going to come back. This is your responses in Grand Terrace. We had 1,180 medical responses. There's 23 other responses, and there's a variety of things that that might mean. That might be a mistaken identity. Somebody believes they see a fire. It may be that there's a power line that's out in a field, or a power line that's down in a field, and people are concerned it's going to start a fire. Those are some of the other calls. Public service is when the public calls us because they have a need that they can't get anybody else out. For instance, probably the most common one we get called on is when somebody's fallen and they can't get up, and they call 911 so we can assist them into a chair or to a bed, but they're not, there's no medical needs. Traffic collisions, we abbreviate that TCs. There's other fires. There's vehicle fires, investigations and alarms, hazmats. Notice there's a lot of hazmats here in the city, which worries me a little bit. Now, where I'm focusing on that is community risk reduction tells me if there's more hazmats that should be, what do we need to do to prevent that? Vegetation fires, about nine, which is good for this city, as long as we keep the mountain from burning, I'm happy. The other ones tend to be lot fires, and, you know, at worst, we're probably going to lose a fence, but we typically don't lose structure here in Grand Terrace. Traffic collision with extrication means we're going to use the jaws of life to take people out of those vehicles that have crashed. And then you have structure fires and commercial fires. So in all, as we did a study, now, our modeling, as I mentioned in this slide here, there's about 1,180, but as we did our modeling, we studied 1,434 calls, just over a year period, and the average response time was 5 minutes 55 seconds. The Valley response time, on average, was about a minute less. Here in Grand Terrace, because we only have one fire engine, it typically is a little bit higher. When we did the response model without Fire Station 23, it jumps to 9 minutes 36 seconds. Now, this doesn't mean that I'm going to close Fire Station 23. This is a very important fire station to our community, but I was asked that question from a citizen on what would happen if Fire Station 23 was closed, which is why I included it in the presentation. I'm going to go ahead and back a little bit and talk about the East Valley Service Zone. I mentioned that our zones, the revenue that's raised in the zones must be spent in the zones. Here in the East Valley, so there's two divisions in the Valley. There's the West Valley, which is Upland, Fontana, Bloomington, and the surrounding areas, and there's the East Valley, which we're part of. In the East Valley Division, there's 14 staff stations. The vast majority of those are in San Bernardino, but we also have Muskoye, Mentone, and Grand Terrace, and DeVeau. There's 156 suppression personnel that are assigned here. In San Bernardino City, we have nine of those stations. We also have one station at the airport that is contracted with the airport to provide fire protection. So that's not included in the FP5. The airport actually pays us for that fire station. DeVeau, which covers our Pass, Mentone, and Muskoye all have one station. Respond to 46,500 incidents per year with those stations. The complexities, obviously, are severe fire danger in this area. There's a large homeless population that produces an increase in calls for services, and that we have many unoccupied buildings and large structured fires in the area. Possible reductions with FP5 would be a reduction in three full engine companies and one squad in the greater San Bernardino area. Now, these cuts would have to be in the East Valley because of that contract in Fontana. So where those stations are, again, we'll use very sophisticated modeling, and that'll be a policy decision, but we're going to do the most amount of good for the most amount of people. It'd be a reduction in staffing in total at four fire stations in the greater San Bernardino area. Why is there more fire stations than engine companies? Because there's fire stations in San Bernardino City that have multiple engines at one station. For instance, Fire Station 224 has a fire engine, and it has a truck. The difference with the trucks and the fire engine is the truck has a big ladder on top, fire engine doesn't. But the trucks sometimes have pumps, sometimes they don't. In the City of San Bernardino, they, one of them, but both of them don't. So that makes it a little more difficult to figure out how you're going to cut staff. I mentioned that we have an airport fire station under contract, and that we also provide paramedics to SWAT program to make sure that we're supporting our officers and keep them safe. I've already gone through the call types here. I'll talk a little about administration and special operations, which this provides a lot of protection here in the city. So we're broken down to Training and Safety, Emergency Medical Service, and Wildland Fire. We have a professional fire hand crew, and I mentioned community risk reduction a couple of times now. Those of you that are familiar with San Bernardino, I can ask you, where do the fires occur every single year in San Bernardino?
Little Mountain.
Little Mountain will shut now. Paris Hill, people will say Paris Hill. They'll also say Waterman Canyon. This year, we put goats into Little Mountain. And why would you do that? It's expensive to put goats on Little Mountain, but it's a lot cheaper to put goats on Little Mountain than to fight that fire. Our hand crews are another way that we're reducing the fuels. If we reduce the fuels and create fire breaks, we're going to prevent the houses from burning down. That program is very likely to be cut with the loss of FP5. We also have inmate hand crews. We're the only county in the United States that has inmate hand crews from their county sheriff. The county sheriff is one of the greatest cooperators I've ever met. I think he's one of the finest men that I've ever met. Our inmate hand crew has been in existence now for about six years, and we use those inmates to go out and create the fire breaks, to do flooding. They could do sandbagging for us. They do so much good work for us. Unfortunately, we're coming to a point where there's such a reduction in inmates due to COVID, we may not have an inmate fire crew in August, or, excuse me, in September. We have heavy fire equipment operations. That means bulldozers that we use, not only on wildland fires, but also in flooding. We have front-end loaders, so we have operators that are cross-trained that go do those programs. And then we have a partnership with the sheriff's helicopter, where we put a fire paramedic and a fire captain, paramedic on there to assist with rescues and to get out quickly and to assist our citizens that need to go to the hospital rapidly. We also have the office of the fire marshal, and the fire marshal does all the fire planning and engineering, the plan reviews, new construction inspections, annual and state mandate inspections. He does all the arson investigations. This year, believe it or not, we're getting two canine dogs under a grant, which is the first time in 20 years for the Fire District, and I can't wait to come back and show you those dogs because they're absolutely amazing. 20 years ago, I learned when we had the fire dog is that you can lie to an arson investigator. You can look at him in the eyes and lie to him, but guess what? You can't lie to a dog. When the dog smells a cell run on you and says, "This person did it," you're going to jail. Public education, schools, community outreach, juvenile fire starter program. Unfortunately, sometimes we have kids that start going the wrong way, and they light fires. How many of you were kids in lit fires besides Chief Mahia back there? It happens. And we have a program that we enroll these kids in to make sure that they're educated and they're rehabilitated, and that's been very successful. And then they do fire suppression support activity. There would be a loss with FP5 because a lot of those programs aren't funded by fees, and some of our fees are supported by FP5. So simply put, there would have to be an increase in some of the fees, such as plans check, in order to cover those costs. And a lot of the other services that I've described would need to be cut in order to help make up a loss of FP5. There's some other services that we need to look at. We provide ALS, which is Advanced Life Support, or paramedics, on every single one piece of our equipment. As a paramedic for over 20 years, I'll tell you, the greatest accomplishments in my life, the best I've ever felt, isn't when I put out a fire. It's when somebody comes to the front door, and they ring the doorbell, and they ask for me, and when I went to the door and they said, "Hey, are you Dan Muncy?" And I said, "Yes, sir." And I'm looking at them, and they look familiar, but I can't place it. And they say, "Three weeks ago, four weeks ago, I had a heart attack. I guess I was pulsus apnic. My heart wasn't beating, and I wasn't breathing, and you saved my life." Those are the greatest things, and I truly believe in having paramedics on our engines. Typically, fire resources get to calls a little quicker than AMR will, and we work really well as a team with our AMR partner to make sure that we're saving as many lives as possible. Our technical rescue program, we have a Type 1 state-certified USAR Heavy Rescue. While it's state-certified, it's one of those mandates that we don't receive any funding for, that we would need to give back and just say, "We just can't do this." And that's, that particular USAR is called the Regional Task Force 6. It's California OES. We do many water rescues, not so much here in Grand Terrace, other than occasional pool rescues. We do a lot of inclement weather, fire rescue EMS services that would be impacted. We do wilderness rescue that would be impacted, hazardous materials response and mitigation. With the loss of FP5, we would need to go from four hazardous material response units down to a single response unit. The benefit of having these in the regions is that we're able to get to these hazardous material releases very quickly and stop the environmental impacts and reduce damages to our businesses. More than likely, we would have to charge for those things to have a private company come in. I'm not going to go through every single one of these slides. If you go back to the original data on the slide, you can look, and you'll see a presentation with the Board of Supervisors, and it gives a very big presentation that discusses everything we discussed today, including all four zones. Instead, I'm just going to end this and ask if there's any questions from the council.
Thank you, Chief Muncy. Does council have questions at this time? Okay, we'll go with Councilmember Allen, Councilmember Robles, Mayor Protem, and then Councilmember Hussey.
I just want to thank you for that excellent presentation, Chief Muncy, and I appreciate it. I learned a lot. My question to you is, prior to the county assuming fire protection for Grand Terrace, when CAL FIRE was our provider, we had an extensive, we had a volunteer program and a paid-on-call program. And so many, many young people in this town who, that grew up in this and all that, that doesn't happen anymore. And I would like, my question to you is, can it? Is it possible? Is it possible to to bring something like that back to some, some degree, some element, something like, you know, the sheriff has an extensive volunteer program, so.
Thank you, sir. I started as a paid-call firefighter. It's how I got in this business, and I think I might have told my story. I dropped out of high school at one point, and I was a rock climber. One of my friends fell, broke his back, went to EMT school, and I became a paid-call firefighter. And back when I started as a paid-call firefighter, the state regulations required training that was about this thick, literally, our task book that we needed to complete was maybe nineteen pages in order to achieve what we call the Volunteer Firefighter One Certificate. About seven years ago, that Volunteer Firefighter One program went away. It was not a county fire decision, it was a state-of-California training decision to do that. Now, San Bernardino County is also a combination fire department, which means that we have volunteers, and we also have paid firefighters. So we have volunteers typically in our mountains community, which would be Angeles Oaks, Forest Falls would be two, two of the areas, and then we also have them out in Hallandale and Hinckley. When I first started, we had somewhere near fifteen paid-call fire stations. But as time went on, the state instead said, in order to be certified as a firefighter, you need, the volunteer's gone, you've got to be a firefighter one. The current task book is about this thick. As we hire firefighters, it requires sixteen weeks of training, Monday through Friday, and that's just to receive the firefighter one through the state. And then that's not including even the EMS, which we used to have what we called Emergency Medical Responder, which was EMR, it was a two-week class. Now that is gone, and you, the lowest level is an EMT, which is a full semester out of the local college. So we're really challenged with that level of training. And what we found is that as we're training people in this, they get the training, and they immediately leave, and they go to Orange County, LA County, LA City, wherever they can get jobs, because they now have these certificates. So we were spending a lot of money on that first. The second problem that we have is that volunteerism has declined greatly. So we recently did a study to say, what will require for us to train a citizen, allow them to work and have a family, but provide all these trainings to allow them to be a firefighter on the basic level? And it would require Tuesdays for five hours, Tuesday nights at five hours, Thursday nights for four hours, eight hours on Saturdays, and nine hours on Sundays for an entire year to get that training. In addition, the state of California now mandated that we have what we call Academy, Accredited Learning Academy, ALA. So these, everybody that we train now has to go to an ALA academy to be tested to state standards. So Jeff, or Councilmember Allen, I'm sorry, and it's funny, we actually have a Jeff Allen that works for us, I'm sure you've been told that, who's really good.
Yeah, we know each other.
He's a good guy.
Yeah.
We really are still demonstrating that we're working with our communities to do this, but what we found out is that a lot of our volunteers, and those of you that remember our paid-call firefighters that were here, they started getting really up in age, and we had a real hard time getting younger folks interested in programs like that. It's not just the county of San Bernardino. If you Google volunteerism in the fire service across the nation, you'll find that it's occurring in every state across the nation. So those are some of the challenges, but we do have combination, and wherever possible, we use them. Now, the second piece we look at that is, well, maybe we don't have to train people to be full firefighters. And the sheriff's department, they no longer have reserve deputies that they hire, correct?
We don't, we don't generally, because of the training standards.
Okay, you need to repeat his answer because nobody listening.
Sure. He said they don't have reserve deputies anymore because of those training standards. They have post standards, just like we have the California State Fire Marshal training standards. But what they do have is citizens on patrol, and we have a very similar program called Fire Corps, which we train people basically how to use a radio, how to do fire watch for us, how to help and go out to the community and help us with community risk reduction, train them in CPR so they can train the community, but they don't replace a full-time firefighter. So those are some of the challenges we face as a district. We are looking at that with a lot of ingenuity. We're looking at hiring people out of our local community, because I mentioned we lose a lot of people to Orange County, LA City, LA County. We don't pay them the most here in the county of San Bernardino. We never have, but we have a lot of pride, because this is where we grew up. And so we really try to hire people out of the local community to maintain that.
Councilmember Robles, and then Mayor Protem.
When I was working on my master's in public policy, we had a city manager that said, the amount of times we roll out for falls is a high number, and it shows. Has there ever been any consideration to, just like you have paramedics, some other kind of service, maybe even the private sector, that would just go around and perform that task?
Thank you for asking that question. We are going to be amongst the first in the nation to have what we call ECNS, which is Emergency Communication Nurse System. We're putting nurses in our dispatch center. As I started as a firefighter, typically, people would call 911 for very legitimate reasons. And as I progressed through the last twenty-five years of my career, I'm finding that people sometimes call us for maybe not emergency reasons. A quick story, one that always sticks out in my head, is we were called for somebody that had back pain, they were on their couch, and we knocked on the door, went in, and they said, oh, I've got severe back pain. And we said, well, let us help you, sir. Did you trip or fall? No, no, I've had this for years. I don't need you guys to check me out, I just can't see my TV, can you turn it for me? They literally called 911. We responded code three, which means lights and sirens to this person's house. So we went to the Board of Supervisors, and we said, with COVID happening, there's care money, there's CARE Act money out there. We would like to use CARE Act money to put nurses into our dispatch center, so if somebody calls 911, has anybody called 911 recently? Okay. When you call 911, they're going to ask you a bunch of questions, and sometimes you want to tell them, listen, here's my address, and my house is on fire, come. That's a legitimate emergency, we're going to come very quickly. But as they're asking questions, they determine the level of the emergency, and we we assign that a code. An echo means that it's true emergency. Respond code three as fast as you can, that person needs to go to the emergency room, and they're going to go to the operating room very quickly. A delta means that they're going to need to go maybe code three to an emergency room, a charlie means they probably should go to an emergency room, non-code three, a bravo means that they likely could go to an urgent care, and alpha means they probably need to be referred to a doctor's office, and omega means that there really isn't any medical necessity for this call. So we've been doing priority dispatching as people call us. So when we receive this priority dispatch, guess what? The fire service is mandated by law from the state to respond with an ambulance, and no matter what, we have to take that patient to the emergency room. We cannot take that patient to a doctor's office, we cannot take that patient to an urgent care once we've sent an ambulance. So by putting nurses into the dispatch center, we're not going to activate the 911 system. There'll never be a call to the fire department. Instead, they'll look and they'll refer that patient back to their own insurance hotline, they'll refer that, they'll make an appointment for them at a doctor's office and send an Uber or Lyft to pick them up at the right time. They'll refer them back to mental health or public health services. So the fire departments engage with all our stakeholders, including Airhead Regional Medical Center, Loma Linda University Medical Center, IEHP, Kaiser, to partner with all our stakeholders to redesign the 911 system, to do exactly what you just said, Mrs. Robles, is that at the end of the day, there are a lot of calls that the fire department respond to that we really shouldn't respond a fire engine to. Now, what percentage? It's about ten percent of our calls. So it doesn't solve the problem, you still need to have a fire engine there for the other ninety percent of those more critical calls for the rescues and the fires and the falls, but I'm really excited about that. We've set a goal of having, we actually have two nurses that are full-time on this project right now. We've hired a consultant, and we've bought the software, accredited software, to be able to do this triage of calls with the goal of implementing that January one. So I love talking technology and innovation in the fire service, so thank you for that, and I look forward to coming back to the council and talking about some of our other innovations later.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you. I'd like to thank you for your service. It's been one time over a nine-year period that our father-in-law had to take advantage of the fire department and get him up off the floor. And it's just a fact of life that sometimes we're not all that equipped to be able to do things that you guys are definitely trained in. My question's very simple. I, let's say I'm a property owner in the city of Grand Terrace. I own two pieces of property, one a big one, one a little one, for whatever circumstances attacked on my property. I, seeing as how this is a parcel tax, and there is a chance that it may survive, what kind of written documentation can you provide to the city that can assure the homeowners in the city of Grand Terrace that the policy that if you own more than one parcel, you only get billed for a single parcel in that ownership? I've heard it stated in our meetings that that is the policy. I'm not a real big one of policies, I like coordinances, codes, and, and things in writing. So is that, is that something that the department's going to do?
Well, sir, I wish that that was the case, but that's not the case. So if you own multiple pieces of property, you'll receive multiple bills. Now, if those properties are contiguous, what you could do is go to the assessor's office and join those properties, and then you would receive one bill. But with property owners, that's not often the case. Could I go even further with your question, if you wouldn't mind?
Sure.
I often get asked, well, I own a vacant land, but Walmart is next door, and Walmart pays the same as my vacant lot, why is that? Or I own a residential house, and I pay the same as a commercial or an industrial policy, property, why is that? And that's a great question. And it comes down to, when the voters of Hallandale enacted that tax, they, that's the way they did it. And so when the district, when annexations occurred into the tax, that tax already existed as it is. In the scheme of things, in the county fire broader picture, it makes more sense than it would seem, not so much in the valley, but in the mountains and the desert areas, it makes a lot of sense. If we were to charge differently for different parcels, in other words, a commercial property would pay $200, and a residential paid $100, and a vacant lot paid nothing. Well, in the valley, there's a lot of commercial buildings, you would have the most of the money raised in the valley, but again, the money that's raised in the valley needs to be spent in the valley. But in the desert areas, where there is no commercial or industrial, you have vacant land, you wouldn't receive, there would be no money for fire protection there. So it's not the best system, and we've been challenged to figure out a better way to do this. And the board is, when I was hired eight months ago, I was directed by the board, figure this out. And we've been under a lot of discussions on how to make this more fair and equitable. The second thing they said is, Chief Muncie, we expect a very efficient fire district. And so a lot of the innovations that we're talking about, in the end, create those efficiencies that, that allow us to serve the public better and stay within our means. The third thing that they asked us to do is create transparency in the dealings of the fire district. This is not my first time that I've been here to the city, and this is not the last time, I'm always happy to come to your council meetings. Those of you that know me know that I'm very active in the community, and I'm often out in our service groups. I do Zoom meetings with the community, and I'm very accessible, and that's very, very important to me. We're also creating websites where the public can go, and they can see the money that's raised in Grand Terrace is being spent in Grand Terrace, and I'd like to take a second and discuss that, if I might. There's a total of, there's a total of one point, excuse me, I'll just read the whole number, one million, two hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars raised in property taxes. So about 1.2 million dollars. A fire station to operate here is 1.9 million dollars. Interestingly, this fire station is amongst the least expensive to operate in county fire. The reason is the city owns the property. Typically, it costs us about $200,000 more to operate a fire station. So 1.2 million dollars in property taxes. We also do cost recoveries. We do cost recoveries if somebody willfully and maliciously starts a fire. We will charge them for that response. We receive 1,533 dollars. We also were reimbursed for doing a standby at an incident of $1,000, which brought our total revenues to 1,235,270 dollars. But it's almost 2 million to run that fire station. So the gap is 685,000 dollars gap. Now, what I didn't mention is how much FP five money is raised here. The total FP five money is 567,866 dollars. So if you add in all the revenues, the property tax, the standbys, the cost recoveries that we do, plus the FP five, we're still 117,332 dollars short for operating this fire station. So that money comes from other areas in the valley to support Grand Terrace. One of the things that's important to me is we create our dashboards to allow the public to view this, is that they're able to see the trends in how we're spending our money, that they're able to see the raises that our folks are getting, or how much the retirement system's costing, or how much we're spending on, on new fire equipment. Because I want to make sure that I'm held accountable for my job of creating as most efficient public safety as we can. At the end of the day, an FP five loss in the city means that we're 685,198 dollars in the red in operating this fire station.
All right. Councilmember Hesse, did you have questions?
Thanks, chief, for coming out. That was one of my questions that you just answered right there, because I know we get, pay the fire, San Bernardino County, ten cents on the dollar for our tax. But besides that, you know, I know it was brought up with AMR and the paramedic service and reimbursement from AMR. Has the county straightened that out? Because I know that they leave the paramedics at the hospital, do they straighten out? Because you talked about nurses, are nurses going to take over where the paramedics, right, and put the guys or the girls back up on the line? And is AMR paying for the services? Because I know we have a lot of medical services, and will that help with the budget on, as far as with you guys?
The county is currently renegotiating, or no, that's not the correct word, the county is currently studying our, the ambulance-exclusive operating areas. There's eight of them that they're looking at in the valley, Grand Terrace is in one of those EOAs, exclusive operating areas. The county did a workshop last Tuesday, and they looked at the system. The next step is for the county to make a determination whether they're going to put those eight EOAs out to bid. In other words, another ambulance company could bid on it, AMR could bid on it, or if they're going to extend the contract with AMR. To answer your question, there is no reimbursement to any of the public safety entities within the county of San Bernardino for services provided to our customers prior to the transportation. That's a fair question, because in the, in quite a few counties in California, that does occur, where AMR pays a fee to those advanced life support fire engines that are arriving on scene and often stabilizing the patient prior to transportation. Today, we don't receive any money for that. AMR, now, in fairness, AMR has come and mentioned informally to the fire departments that they would like to start paying us, and they've offered 7 million dollars across the region, which sounds like a lot of money, but when you break it down per call, it's, it's less than 100,000 dollars here in the city of Grand Terrace. As we move forward, the county of San Bernardino is studying that, and they're really looking at the revenue that's involved in the ambulance transportation business and determining the level of profitability, and then determining, I don't want to put so many words in their mouths, but looking at what the ability to reimburse the public safety entities that are expending money on these medical calls prior to transportation.
All right, thank you.
All right. Thank you, chief, I appreciate your report and answering all of our questions. And at this time, I believe we have a couple of requests to speak.
Thank you. I'm going to provide these numbers that I've given verbally to the city manager. We'll, Chief Mahia will email that to him tomorrow so that you have that, and we can make that a matter of public record. Thank you.
And when did you think that dashboard was going to be ready?
Real close. I've been all over our GIS analysts, and fortunately, COVID slowed us down, and we started using some of our geospatial information system technology on COVID. some of our geospatial information system technology on COVID, but she's shown me some great products. And it's really important that we actually create three dashboards. One's a management to hold our people accountable, to make sure we're running with efficiency. The second is for our policymakers to have an understanding, and the third is for our community to, to create the transparency.
Thank you. Thank you again for being here. Our first speaker is Natalie Zook.
For the record, I'm Natalie Zook. Thank you, council members, and thank you, Chief Muncy, for that presentation. I'd like to start this off by saying that the Red Brennan Group fully supports our firefighters. What we don't support is the county board of supervisors going behind our backs and forcing citizens to pay a tax that we never got to vote on. We are against that principle. A regressive tax at that, a tax that unfairly targets small businesses and families, a tax that Grand Terrace residents, along with residents throughout the entire county, never got to vote on. The protest process required to defeat this tax pitted common citizens like me against some major county entities, and we never stood a chance. Grand Terrace residents already pay a large chunk of change to county fire every year in annual property taxes, not including the $157 fire service tax on top of that. If you divide that out over 12 months, the average Grand Terrace household pays $48 a month to county fire. That's more than my internet bill. And to correct the record, Chief Muncy, according to documents we obtained from the registrar of voters, that special tax was originally $117, not 137. And because of a stipulation that says the tax can increase by 3% annually with no limit, that tax is now as high as $157.26. Grand Terrace residents shouldn't have to pay for fire protection services that go towards San Bernardino or Mentone, at least not without their permission. We've put in dozens of public records requests with the county and the fire department, tracking down where the money's really going. And let's not forget why the fire service tax was imposed on people in the first place, because the fire department was running a deficit of $29.2 million. Citizens were forced to pay for the fiscal irresponsibility of county government. The board of supervisors voted 3-2 to impose this tax, and at least two of those three boards of supervisor members accepted campaign contributions from the county fire union's PAC during their reelection campaigns. And our newest board member, who happens to represent our district here, District Three, who was against this tax as recently as October and has seemingly flip-flopped now, accepted upwards of $9,700 from the county fire union during her election this past, this past March. And those 1,022 voters from Hellendale who voted on this and live over 80 miles away from here, they represent less than 1% of registered voters who are paying this special tax. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zook. Chad Keel.
Thank you. For the record, I am Mr. Chad Keel. I'm a business owner, a homeowner, and a family man with two small children, and I'm extremely involved and active in my community and the county as a whole, and I'm thankful for the opportunity to speak with your board and this community. So thank you for giving me your time. FP5 is not about fire services. Fifteen fire stations have closed since FP5 has passed within the county. To drive that point home just a little bit more, homeowners are paying for more, but they're getting less. The money FP5 generated is for administration, pensions, and budget shortfalls, like Natalie just mentioned, $29 million or more every year. As a father, this deeply concerns me. If my elected officials in county fire, a tax entity, will pass property taxes without our vote to cover budget shortfalls, how is my two-year-old daughter going to be able to afford a house and pay for property taxes 20 years from now? My property taxes are already close to $3,000 per month. If we keep allowing the county to slap on another 157 here, another 50 here, another 120 here without our vote, where will we be in 20 years? How will our children not only be able to afford a house, how will they afford to pay their property taxes? This honestly brings me back to like sixth or seventh grade, learning about the American Revolution and no taxation without representation, which became a political slogan originating during the 1700s. In short, many of those colonies believed that the government should not tax a populace until that populace is somehow represented in the government. Now, let's flash forward to the California Constitution, Article 13(c), Section 2(b). No local government may impose, extend, or increase any general tax unless and until that tax is submitted to the electric and voted by a majority vote, or approved by a majority vote. Why did the board of supervisors in county fire pass the FP5 tax without the vote of the people? Well, unfortunately, that's why I'm here, having to speak to you today. Over 30,000 county residents signed our citizens initiative to repeal FP5. So I'm glad I got to come here and just really clear the record of why FP5 was there in the first place. It's mismanaging money.
Thank you, Mr. Keel. Angel Hernandez.
My name is Angel, and I'm, I'm a resident of San Bernardino County, and I'm advocating against the FP5 tax. I have nothing against you, the firefighters. My grandfather was a firefighter. Listening to his stories also always fascinated me and inspired me for the great work that you do for the safety and livelihood for our communities. I received my degree in political science with emphasis on law and philosophy. I do not practice law, nor am I an expert of the law, but the verbiage is clear. According to the constitution for the state of California, a two-thirds majority vote must be implemented in order to implement any special tax. This vote was, this tax was implemented without that. That is unconstitutional, arguably illegal, and just plain wrong. The original argument for why we needed this tax is because we needed to stop our fire stations from shutting down. Yet, since this tax was implemented, 17 fire stations have shut down. I've been told that the stations that are being shut down are paid-call fire stations, meaning that these fire stations are on call. There were initially 12 paid-call stations. There are now, there are now nine, which is not the majority. It is my belief that the necessity for FP5 is not because we need it to keep fire stations open, but to have a safeguard on the mismanaging of budget spending. This is my recommendation. I have done conclusive research on neighboring counties in California and across the country. Many counties have volunteer stations. If a shortfall of staffing is the issue for why we need FP5, because of needing to pay them, let's train the public who want to become volunteer firefighters and expand that program. Let's expand our efforts in educating the public to better our ISO scores and lower our insurance premiums. County Fire, I am not against you, but I am for fiscal responsibility and representative democracy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Alvaro Valenzuela.
My name is Alvaro Valenzuela. I'm here today on behalf of the Red Brennan Group. We're a nonprofit organization based out of Wrightwood, and we're fighting for the repeal of the FP5 tax this election on November 3rd. I got started with the Red Brennan Group in 2019 when we were still getting signatures as an organization to put this initiative onto the ballot. I remember going door-to-door in countless neighborhoods, talking face-to-face with everyday citizens. Out of all the conversations I had, one point kept coming up. It was that a lot of people I talked to didn't even know what the FP5 tax was, let alone that they were actually paying for it. So I would have to explain to these people that they are currently paying for this additional property tax of $157 that increases in amount every year. They never even had a chance to vote on this tax, yet they're still required to pay for it every year. $157 might not seem like much to you or me, but that might not be the case for our neighbor. $157 can mean a difference on if a family can get groceries for a week. $157 can mean the difference on if a family can pay the light bill for the month. $157 can mean the difference on if a family can continue living where they're at. The more people I spoke to, the more signatures I collected, and the more clear it became to me. The FP5 tax needs to be repealed this November 3rd. This tax was never voter-approved, yet it's still collecting its yearly wage from the citizens of the county. You need to ask before you take our money. One kind of argument that people had was that they were simply renting, and because of that, they didn't have to pay for this property tax. And to that, I tell them that in one way or another, you still feel the ramifications of this tax. The property owner of the residence they're staying at will get charged this tax, and do you think they're simply going to pay it out of their own pocket? No. They can simply raise your rent to cover for that increased tax. Everyone has to pay the piper in the end, but that's not how this story has to end. We have the chance to repeal this tax. We can create our own reality, a reality where we don't pay for unfair and unjust taxes, a reality where we vote for what we believe is fair, a reality where a vote can make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valenzuela. And that's my last request to speak on that item. Okay, and thank you to Chief Muncy. We'll move to item B, which is reordering of additions to or removal of items from the agenda. And I'm going to suggest one reordering, which is to move our city council communications towards the end of the meeting before city manager communications. Any objections? We're moving our city council communications to, right before city manager communications. Are there any other reordering of agenda items, Mr. City Manager?
We have none, Mayor.
All right. So we'll go to the consent calendar. The consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the city council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any requests for items to be removed from the consent calendar? Madam City Clerk?
Madam Mayor, I, I need to remove item number three, the approval of the regular meeting minutes for August 11th.
All right. Any other items to be removed? All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll move.
Councilmember Allen makes the motion. Councilmember Hesse makes a second. Please call the vote.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hesse?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor McInnes?
Yes. All right. Item three, is that coming off and coming back to us?
Yes, there was, I just needed to inform council that this particular item erroneously documents Mayor Proton Wilson as voting yes for the emergency rehabilitation of Grand Terrace Road north of Newport Avenue, Project One. In fact, he had voted no. That change needs to be corrected on the minutes.
Okay, so you'll bring it back to us?
I'll bring it back to the next meeting.
All right, very good. Next is our public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the city council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask a question for clarification. Items may also have a brief response from staff, and matters may be agendized for future meetings. Request to speak at this time? Thank you. Bobby Forbes?
Good evening. Thank you. I know that we have a sheriff that works with the homeless group in Grand Terrace. We seem to have a very, an increase in the last couple of weeks in the community. West of the freeway is where I'm noticing it most. We're having things stolen off the porches. I noticed a stroller sitting on Barton Road all day today. There seems to be a camp over, off of Grand Terrace Road in Vivienda set up. There was, there's cars sitting around in our neighborhood that don't belong, and so I'd like to know, or make that deputy aware that this is going on in town. We had a very serious incident, multiple incidents at our office building on Barton Road. I've called the deputies a couple of times. The man was arrested, I believe, twice for warrant, but he attacked verbally and physically the maintenance worker's wife. That is not okay. I can no longer work in the evenings at our office that I've done for 30 years in Grand Terrace, because I'm afraid. I am not in a position to defend myself and don't want to be in that position. So I am asking for the deputies to please pay attention. If you are unaware, maybe reach out to some of us that are aware. I would be happy to talk to anyone. I've had, I saw a motorcycle being pushed down Michigan tonight about 5:30 with a woman about my size. The motorcycle was laying across the shopping cart. I wasn't sure if I should call the deputy or not, and I got sidetracked and took care of my business and forgot all about it till I was on my way here. There's strange things going on in town, and we have that one deputy there that's supposed to be addressing it. I don't recall who that is, and I would like to have someone pay attention. I will commend you on the traffic violations that have been written up today. I had a Black Dodge Charger pass me twice, run two stop signs right next to me today by the junior high on Mount Vernon. Bold-faced, just plain random, didn't even like think the stop at all. And it goes on every day in town. So we appreciate the new lights on the stop signs. I myself would like to see the yellow frames go around the signal lights. It looks a little bit like a circus, but maybe it'll help one per traffic signal switching that someone doesn't run it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes. And that's my last request to speak on that item. Let's have a five-minute recess before we move into public hearings.
COVID-19 proceeds.
We're at public hearings, item F6 on our agenda. Appeal hearing of conditional use permit 19-01. Site and architectural review 19-03, and environmental 19-05, requesting approval to develop a trailer/container storage facility, providing a maximum of 650 parking spaces for semi-trailers, shipping and storage containers, chassis, and on an approximately 21.92-acre site located approximately 520 feet north of Vivienda Avenue and south of the Santa Ana River Trail in the northwestern portion of the city. Assessor's parcel number is 0275-191-06 and 0275-191-30. So our, our process tonight, to speak on a public hearing item, please fill out a request to speak form and give it to the city clerk. Anyone who wishes to speak on a public hearing item will be allowed three minutes to address the city council. If you challenge in court any action taken concerning a public hearing item, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. We will, we will take this item in the following steps. Our city attorney will have a opportunity to give us some instructions before we begin. Staff will give a presentation of the agenda item. City council will then have an opportunity to ask questions of staff. We will then review any written correspondence that has come in. The public hearing will be opened. The appealing party's comments will come next, and, and the appealing party will have five minutes. The applicant will have an opportunity for comments or opposition, and they will also have five minutes. Oral testimony then from the public. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. There'll be an opportunity for the appealing party to express any type of rebuttal necessary, five minutes for that. The applicant will then give an opportunity for rebuttal, five minutes. The public hearing will be closed, and then the city council will have their deliberation. So we will begin with Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to briefly go over with you what the zoning code provides with respect to the appeal process and what the actions that you'll be taking this evening. So first of all, when an appeal is filed, the zoning code requires that a report be submitted to the city council containing the reasons for the commission, planning commission's decision, and the minutes of its meeting regarding the appeal decision. In the agenda package tonight, staff has provided the full planning commission record, the resolution of approval, which constitutes the record required under the zoning code, and the minutes of the meetings at which the project was discussed. The zoning code provides for three steps during the appeal process. The first part is that the city council shall hear the appeal, and that'll be conducted during the public hearing, as the mayor indicated. during the public hearing, as the mayor indicated. The second thing is the city council shall, under the code, shall make its own determination regarding the application and its consistency with the zoning code and the general plan. There are two steps with this. First of all, there is a site plan and architectural review approval and a conditional use permit approval. By making the findings required under the zoning code for each of those land use entitlements, you are satisfying the second prong of the three-part process. I will quickly go over what those findings are and for the council and for the public. You can locate the findings on packet pages 93 and 94. I'm on mute.
Was it me?
Okay, I'll give it another go. Okay. So with respect to site plan and architectural review findings, there are several. One is the proposed project is consistent with the intent of this code and the general plan. Second, the location and configuration of all structures associated with the project are visually harmonious with the site and surrounding sites and structures, that they do not interfere with the neighbors' privacy, that they do not unnecessarily block scenic views from other structures and/or public areas, and are in scale with the townscape and natural landscape of the area. Third, the architectural design of structures, their materials and colors are visually harmonious with surrounding development, natural landforms, are functional for the proposed project, and are consistent with the zoning code. Fourth, the plan for landscaping in open spaces provides a functional and visually pleasing setting for the structures on the site and is harmonious with the natural landscape of the area and nearby developments. Fifth, there is no indiscriminate clearing of property, destruction of trees or natural vegetation, or the excessive and unsightly grading of hillsides, thus the natural beauty of the city, its setting and natural landforms are preserved. Sixth, the design and location of all signs associated with this project are consistent with the scale and character of the building to which they are attached or otherwise associated with and are consistent with the zoning code. And seventh, conditions of approval for this project necessary to secure the purposes of the zoning code and general plan are made part of the approval. And again, those findings and staff's factual support for those findings can be found on packet page 94. The second land use entitlement is the conditional use permit findings, and this begins on page 93. There are three findings. One, the proposed use will not be one detrimental to the health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare of the persons residing or working within the neighborhood of the proposed amendment or with the city. Two, injurious to property or improvements to the neighborhood or within the city. The second finding is the proposed use will be consistent with the latest adopted general plan. And third, conditions necessary to secure the purposes of this chapter are made part of the conditional use permit. Those are the set of findings that must be supported with facts in the record. Staff has presented their recommended findings for each of these land use entitlements, and staff has made a recommendation of approval. The third step in the appeal process is upon you making a determination of whether the facts of this case meet those findings, the city council shall either uphold, modify, or reverse the planning commission's decision. To uphold the planning commission's decision, you would need to adopt the resolution that is presented to you. The resolution is to uphold, or recommendation is to uphold the planning commission's approval of both entitlements and to therefore approve the project. Should the council desire to deny the application of the project, the direction should be to deny the project and uphold the appeal and direct staff to bring back at a future meeting a resolution of denial with findings of fact. We will need the planning commission to identify those findings of fact to be included in the resolution. I will also note that there is a provision in the code that calls for new information. If the council receives new information that wasn't presented to the planning commission and you feel that maybe this is something the planning commission should consider, you have the authority to remand it back. So I would like to give you those options. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions about the process. If there are no questions, I'll turn it over to Mr. Weiss.
All right. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Are there questions at this time of our city attorney? All right. Director Weiss?
Thank you. Do you hear me okay?
Yes.
With a mask, it's hard. Good evening, Mayor McInnes and council members. For the record, my name is Steve Weiss. I'm the director of Planning and Development Services. The item before you is an appeal hearing, and I will be following the city attorney's outline. And just for, also, I will be providing the first part of the presentation, and then we have our CEQA consultant, Carl Winter from LSA, who will be providing the environmental documentation. So to start off with, yes, this is an appeal hearing for condition use permit 19-01 and site and architectural review 19-03 and environmental documentation for 19-05. Still, the 2030 goal is to promote economic development by establishing a use that is consistent with the industrial zoning district designation. So the background tied to this approval, on July 16th, 2020, the planning commission conducted a public hearing on this item and voted two yes, one no, and two commissioners were recused to adopt resolution 2020-03, adopting a mitigated negative declaration for the project for compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act and improving, approving the project. So just a real brief proposal on what the applicant proposes. The applicant is proposing to develop a trailer/container storage facility on approximately 22 acres, 650 maximum spaces, and the improvements include installation of perimeter fence with six-foot-tall chain link with a minimum 15-gallon vines that will completely entral the fence, paved entry and turnaround area, 60-foot-wide asphalt/concrete central access road, perimeter 26-foot-wide slag or comparable material access road, security cameras, landscaping, community garden and fruit trees, grove, Santa Ana River trail improvements, and fitness park amenity, also street improvements for North Terrace and also signs, also up to 12 permanent employees, and access from Barton Road through North Terrace Avenue. That's the only way to access this project. Here's the project. It's in red, and it's on the far northwest corner of the city, right, right up against the river and close to South Lacadina Drive and the railroad. This is the site plan that the planning commission approved. As you go up, as you go up North Terrace, the entry to the project, see if we can get this to work. Oops. Oh, jeez. Sorry. Okay. On the left side, the entry bisects the site. Here is more of an illustrative landscape enhanced exhibit that shows that same land use. There is abundant landscaping along the end of the, the entry to the project. On the bottom, you're showing community garden. There's a grove of trees there, and there's also, thank you. And you have a grove of trees there, and then you also have an access road down there, which is what's called a railroad extension. These are an example of some of the amenities that would be part of the project. An entry to the Santa Ana River Trail, signs. This is the community garden with fruit groves, and this is a small teaching amphitheater at Fitness Park. Okay, and also the Terrace Avenue extension, the road is widened. This area hatched here, it will be widened and will be improved, and also the entry to the project will have the improvement of the 60-foot-wide road. Okay, this is just a couple of quick views showing the private road easterly. And this is a view southeast across the site. Southbound Lacadina corridor. The project is actually to the left here. Shows the utility corridor view looking east. So the property characteristics or constraints are over 50% of the site is impacted by a high-voltage Edison Utility Corridor. Edison places restrictions on uses within major corridors. The entire site is within a 100-year floodplain, and the site is adjacent to two railroad right-ofways, one active, and a major floodway, which is the Santa Ana River. And the site's also surrounded by three sides by the city of Colton. So the benefits and contributions to this project, it would discourage, once it's done, it will be completed, and it will discourage illegal dumping in homeless encampments. It'll discourage truck access into adjacent neighborhoods. It dedicates safety improvements to North Terrace Avenue, increases security presence, eliminates access via the underpass to and from South Lacadina Drive. It increases the tax base, contributes financially to the city's general fund for 10 years, and adds community enhancements. So the operations, sorry about the small font, but I'll go through this very quickly. Inbound units average approximately 2.1 units per hour during a 10-hour workday, but that's not continuous. Inbound frequencies may occur every 10 minutes, which is an average. However, the duration would not be throughout the day, only during peak instances. A yard which starts out empty would take approximately 30 days to fill to a capacity of 600 units. So that yard will be, will be empty at first and half-empty for a while until it fills. Now, the storage of the facility typically has peak capacity for three to six months of the year only. The drivers, 25 trucks are local contractors associated with major retailers, for example, Costco, Amazon, and managed by the operator to ensure compliance with all operational requirements. These are not independent out-of-town drivers. The operations plan is to be developed and reviewed by the city, and it's going to include the hours of operation, truck route notification to all drivers, driver orientation training, daily log accounts, security plan measures, self-policing reports, community hotline, quarterly and annual review process that will go through our department. So the next step is the appeal. The commission action on July 16th, 2020 was subject to a 10-day appeal period. The zoning code states that appeal, an appeal may be made by a member of the public or by a member of the city council. The planning commission and site and architectural review board decision for a trailer/container storage facility was actually appealed on July 24th, 2020, and that's why we're here tonight. And this, not asking you to read it, but this is the letter that was submitted by the, by the appellant, and their issues were everything from cut-through traffic to the way the process was reviewed and asked for certain, certain other amenities. So going through the process, the city council shall hear and make its own determination regarding the application and its consistency with the zoning ordinance and the general plan. Upon such determination, the city council shall uphold, modify, or reverse the planning commission, site and architectural review board's decision, which those, GTMC means Grand Terrace Municipal Code, sections 18.63070 and 18.83060, which is the conditional use permit and the site and architectural review appeal standards. So the action, the planning commission in approving the project determined that the project's conditional use permit and site and architectural review findings of fact are supported. They also supported a mitigated negative declaration pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act based on the initial study and supporting information. A mitigated negative declaration 19-05 was prepared. The project will not have a significant impact on the environment due to the incorporation of standard conditions and mitigation measures related to biological, cultural, tribal, geology, soils, hydrology, and water quality. So it's a little redundant, but this is, this is really the process you go through to keep the record going. Pursuant to the CEQA, the initial study was prepared for the project. The initial study is supporting environmental information, a mitigated neg was prepared. The project will not have a significant effect on what I just said. And also, what's most important, the Grand Terrace Municipal Code and General Plan has applied to this project and is consistent. And the final mitigated negative dec satisfied the provisions of CEQA, and it reflects an independent judgment of the city council. It'll be considered and reflects the independent judgment of the city council, and Mr. Winter will get a little bit more into that. So, so what's really, what's really the meat of this is the findings of fact. It's a little small. I do apologize, but, but I'll go through very quickly on this, but this supports what Mr. Garrett was discussing. The proposed use will not be detrimental to the health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare of the persons residing or working within the neighborhood of the proposed project or within the city. The proposed truck-trailer facility is consistent with the M2, which is industrial zoning, the agricultural, two overlay, and the floodplain overlay district requirements. Proposed development plan meets applicable development standards of the agricultural overlay district, including the setbacks of a truck storage facility are complementary to its surrounding uses. The agriculture, the applicant is required to comply with the San Bernardino County standards related to the California restricted materials requirements by the state of California for groundwater protection and to ensure groundwater is not impacted. They also will have a water quality management plan as part of this project. And the applicant is also voluntarily to carry out and pay for certain community benefits outside the scope of a standard development plan with amenities such as a community garden with a grove of fruit trees, a trail connection to the Santa Ana River Trail with an ornate sign, access road improvements, and a teaching amphitheater at Fitness Park. The applicant has also voluntarily committed to making a monetary donation for future street maintenance. The use is consistent with the industrial zoning designation and compatible with the surrounding use. On with conditional use permit, the conditions necessary to secure the purpose, purposes of the Grand Terrace Code and general plan have been applied to the project. Conditions of approval have been established regulating activities and uses not to be injurious to the property or the neighborhood. The proposed use will be consistent with the latest adopted general plan. The proposed use will not be injurious to property or improvements in the neighborhood or within the city. The proposed use will be compliant with applicable Grand Terrace Municipal Codes, that's the entire municipal code, and standards established by the underlying zoning and overlay districts. The proposed site is zone M2 industrial with an AG2 agriculture overlay district and floodplain overlay district. The proposed truck storage facility is consistent with the latest adopted general plan and zoning code, which conditionally allows a trailer storage facility. Conditions of approval for this project necessary to ensure the purposes of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code and general plan are made as part of this approval set forth in the accompanying resolution of approval. So now on to site and architectural review findings of fact. The proposed, it is redundant, but this is, it's two applications. The proposed project, the project is consistent with the intent of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code and general plan. Proposed truck-trailer storage facility is consistent with the general plan floodplain designation, which supports storage and distribution facilities. Regulations allow uses to operate free of overly excessive noise, dust, odor, or other nuisances. The project is consistent with the circulation element of the general plan, which provides for the current and long-term efficient movement of people and goods with, within and through the city, including a well-maintained roadway system within the ultimate right-of-way along the street frontage. Terrace Avenue will provide main access to the project site, and no truck access, and no truck access signs will be placed at Vivienda and Walnut Avenue to keep traffic away from the residential neighborhoods. The project will not cause significant noise impacts to adjacent neighborhoods. The project complies with the open space and conservation elements of the general plan. The location and configuration of the development plan associated with this project is visually harmonious with surrounding sites and structures. The plan for landscaping in open space provides a functional and visually pleasing setting and is harmonious with the natural landscape of the area and nearby developments. The applicant is proposing landscape on the far west side of the property along Vivienda and perimeter fencing covered with vines. There's no indiscriminate clearing of property, destruction of trees, or natural vegetation, or excessive and unsightly grading in hillsides. Thus, the natural beauty of the city is, setting and natural landforms are preserved. Conditions of approval for the project necessary to secure the purposes, to secure the purposes of the Grand Terrace Municipal Code and general plan have been applied to the project. So now we come down to city council options, as Mr. Garrett did outline. You could uphold the commission's approval, which is the planning commission's approval, consistent with staff recommendation, and deny the appeal, or you can... consistent with staff recommendation, and deny the appeal, or you can deny, uphold the appeal and deny conditional use permit and site and architectural review approval, or you can modify the project within the scope of the project analysis, or you can remand the project back to the Planning Commission based on substantive new information. So it's, you can't just dig out old information, it has to be new information that has not been considered before. So this, I won't read this whole thing, you'll probably be happy to hear that, but this is the, this is the recommendation that the, that the staff is supporting, which basically says that the Planning Commission's approval on July sixteenth to have this trailer storage facility and also approving the mitigated negative declaration is to be supported. And that would be our recommendation. So at this point, I am going to hand it off to Carl Winter, who will do a brief presentation about the environmental record. Can you put the other one on, please?
Good evening, Mr. Winter. Is your speaker on?
Can you hear me now?
That's better, thank you.
All right, my name's Carl Winter. I'm an environmental planner with LSA, one-five-zero-zero Iowa Avenue in the city of Riverside. I'm also a resident of the city. So LSA was contracted to prepare the environmental document for the project. And here's how we started the process. We started the process with a community meeting in March of two thousand and nineteen, and from that we developed some steps in the process. One was the preparation of technical studies, the preparation of the ISM-D, public review, response to comments in the public hearing. I'm not going to read all these, but some of the issues raised during the community meeting had to do with increased traffic, the appropriateness of the site for the proposed use, noise from the project, the current conditions of the site, and potential future nuisance factors related to development of the site. So initially, we weren't going to prepare full-blown technical studies. We were just going to do some technical memos, but based on the results of the community meeting, it was decided that full technical studies would be prepared, and that's the entire suite of technical studies that were prepared to support the analysis in the environmental document. The technical studies were reviewed by the city and an independent third-party reviewer to assess the adequacy of each study. And the, and the studies themselves were actually the foundation for the environmental analysis. So a negative declaration, IS was prepared for the project. It addressed all twenty issues addressed in Appendix G of the State Secret Guidelines. For each issue area, there's, the choices were, you could either have a no impact, a less-than-significant impact, less-than-significant with mitigation, or significant. The determination of impact was based on the technical studies and existing city information, plans, and policies. There were no project-related cumulative or unmitigated impacts, and there were impacts that required mitigation for biocultural, tribicultural, geology, and hydrology. And like the technical studies, the ISM-D was reviewed and approved by the city and an independent third-party reviewer. So this is basically, just explains how the significant impacts are determined, and significance is determined on a identifiable, quantifiable, qualitative, or performance standard for a particular environmental effect. So it's not just we think or we feel, it's actually based on substantial evidence. The ISM-D was publicly, was sent out for public review, for review, a review period that extended from December to January ninth, twenty twenty. It was available on all of the city's websites, the website. It was mailed to local, regional, state, and federal agencies, and it was posted at the San Bernardino County Clerk, and a notice of the ISM-D was provided in the newspaper and through public news to residents in the project area. After all that, there was only one public comment received during the public review period, and that was from the city of Colton. The issues raised included impact on visual character of the site, some noise issues related to operational forklifts, safety and condition of the road surface on Terrace Road, and other issues. The city of Gran Terrace responded to all comments, which were reviewed and approved by the city of Colton's staff. None of the public comments or responses identified a new impact or an impact of greater severity than that was, that was already identified in the ISM-D. And the city of Colton comments and the city of Gran Terrace's responses were included as Appendix I of the final ISM-D that was considered by the Planning Commission. That's the first public hearing. Basically, a lot of the issues that were discussed during the community meeting were raised again. So we had another, that was continued, so the public hearing for June eighteenth was continued because of lack of quorum. The public hearing on July sixteenth was, the ISM-D was adopted on a two-to-one vote. And based on that adoption, a notice of termination was filed with San Bernardino County on July twentieth, twenty twenty. So some of the secret considerations included the environmental baseline, and what constitutes the significant impact, and what constitutes substantial evidence. Basically, evidence is fact, you know, not opinion, not feelings, but facts, assumptions based on facts and expert opinions. Economic and social impacts are not generally accepted as a significant impact on the environment, and then whether a impact occurs is based on a fair argument of the entire record. And in this case, the entire record consists of all the technical reports that were prepared to support the study and the environmental document itself. As part as, of, part of the SECA analysis, a traffic impact analysis was prepared for the project. It looked at not only project traffic, but cumulative traffic. Six intersections were analyzed. Traffic counts were collected in May twenty nineteen, and representative truck storage facilities were surveyed to identify what the appropriate trip generation rate for a facility of this type would be. We identified the number of average daily trips. And then, based on the existing level of service standard at the time the document was prepared, that it qual, it, the project will not contribute to a degradation of a level of service at any of the analyzed intersections. Air quality analysis, basically, the construction and operation of the facility would not trigger any air quality emissions in excess of adopted South Coast Air Quality Management District emission standards. Noise assessment was done to support the analysis. I'm not going to read all these, but basically, there was no significant noise impact resulting from the construction or operation of the proposed uses. And these are the mitigation measures that were identified in the ISM-D to reduce the level of impact on selected issues. And with that, I'm available for any questions regarding the SECA process.
Thank you, Mr. Winter. I know Councilmember Hussey had questions for Director Weiss, but please don't go away, Mr. Winter, because we might call you back up.
I'll be here.
So Director Weiss, if you would, please.
Packet page two nineteen. Sorry.
Oh, that's Site Plan?
Landscape enhancement exhibit.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Are you ready for the question? I'm looking at packet page two nineteen, and I see all the great stuff there. Where do people park to have access to all this great amenities? I mean, I don't see any private parking in the diagram. I mean, is, because I see all this parking in the area for the business, but I don't see anything for vehicles want to come down there and use the teaching amphitheater, the community gardens, San Ana River. My concern too is, you know, because like our fitness park, we had inadequate parking, there's only a couple of spots. And I'm really concerned about this, sir, because of the truck traffic, and I don't think people should be parking on the road, so I just want to know, is there parking here that I'm missing?
No, that's, that's a very good question. The answer is, the parking orientation delineation has not been part of this because this is the next part of the process. These are, these are amenities that will be donated by the applicant. This is going to go through what's known as a community benefit agreement that will be brought before the council at a future date. And this is going to be much more of a community participatory process, that, you know, the orientation of all this is conceptual at this point. These are, these are, these are amenities, these are, this gives us the ability to be able to, you know, find funding and get community, community support for these types of amenities. So parking, if parking is an important part of the community garden, the trail and that, there will be parking in these areas, and it will be designed for that. But that will be something that will be later as part of the community benefit process.
Okay, because, you know, I'm looking at this and...
Mr. Duffy had a comment he wanted to make as well.
Yes, for the record, G. Phil Duffy, City Manager. Councilman Hussey, the, the Community Education Center, that's actually at the Fitness Park, and then as Mr. Weiss had indicated, there is a, this is the conceptual design, so, but there's a commitment for proceeds to be able to design it to the, to the aspects. For example, there's orange groves, and there's, there's a community garden beds. So as a part of the permitting process for this, they'll have to establish, you know, the appropriate parking spaces.
Okay, that's just my concern, because I even noticed that the San Ana River across the way, they have inadequate parking, and if we're going to have, if it's approved and truck traffic, I'm worried about, you know, vehicles, and I don't want anybody parking on the street for the residents, and then just the truck traffic. So that's, that's what I'm just looking at. I mean, I, I thought when we looked at the plans that, you know, first, you know, the Planning Commission already went through and approved what's going to happen, and that's why it just stood out for me.
And so one of the requirements, too, of the, of the project is for the developer to establish this separate road. So the, the road leading to the community garden and the, and the groves, that's separate from where the trucks will be traveling. And so there, Mr. Weiss, you want to chime in here? Is, it's, that's, is that called Railroad Road?
Yes, it is.
Yes.
And it will be improved.
Yeah, I understand that. I'm just, vehicles parked on roads and then people walking through, I'm looking at a safety factor. That's the only reason I'm asking if there's going to be...
The council member, it was never intended to provide on-street parking, this would be part of, so it's going to be analyzed again.
All right, thank you.
Further questions? Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. If, I remember the staff, actually Steve Weiss could confirm for me, I am referring to the, actually, Public Works comments in relation to the track conditions and how the two of them tie together. And I was wondering about the thinking about whether or not we are receiving dedications for the main east-west access road, not the one that bisects the property, but the one that is down in the main drag. Are we receiving those, and is that going to be a public road? Or is it what I think is, I fear is, it's going to be a private road?
The, the east-west access road, no, it's designed to public road standards. My understanding is that this road will be public.
And our basis for request there, in order to facilitate a public road in there, I know it's in accordance with the general plan, but at this point, we haven't done a circulation revamp on the general plan, and I don't see anything on a general plan that shows that it's a public road. So is there some kind of findings that back up?
Well, it's a, I mean...
Mr. Duffy?
Just chiming in here, that, so there's some confusion on our part, sir. Terrace Road, which I think you're referencing, that's fully dedicated? Or you're referencing the private road, Railroad Road, that's a private road? Were you, were you referencing Terrace Road going down to the project?
An east-west road that we're all familiar with, that not only feeds this, but also feeds the farms on the south side of, of that road. So what I want to make sure is, is that this is somehow going to become a public dedication, and this being the first project that might be subject to that, make sure that this is a, ultimately going to be a public road, and that we are receiving the dedication that we need to be able to do that.
Mr. Weiss, and do we have the Public Works Director on line, but this is a private, this is a private road, and in order for, and I'm not sure if the city would actually accept this railroad to be able to have to put in the, the conditions needed to make it a public road?
And why is that? This is something we talked about a year ago.
Well, my understanding is that a year ago, we were referencing this private road being built by the, by the project to provide access to the, the current residents in that area. But to accept the road as a public road, I'm not sure that that's, that was part of the conditions.
Is there a reason why we can't require dedications to the city in advance of approval?
Is, is it actually an access to the project? I thought the project was building another road that accessed the project.
Yeah, you know, we have the applicant that can, that can comment on this if you...
Well, I think if you put the diagram back up, because I think we're talking about this road and that road and the other thing, and so maybe Mayor Protem can point to the road that he's talking about, and you can point to the road you're talking about and make sure we're all talking about the same road.
Right, okay, great.
Can you please put the first presentation up?
There it is.
No, just go to the colors, or this one. You have the pointer, Steve?
Yes.
Can you point to the access road?
Yes.
And that's, is that the road that you were requesting to be dedicated, Mayor Protem?
The east, I don't know what you're pointing at, but my, my picture's about an inch by two inches, so...
That's, that's Railroad.
What packet page is it on? One nineteen?
Two nineteen.
You have to write one for the Landscap Plan, it's mine. It's not the one that bisects the property.
No.
I'm talking about the stuff that give access to begin with off of either Locadina or off of Grand Terrace Road.
No, you mean, sir, you mean Terrace, North Terrace.
Okay, yeah.
That's the road, that's the east-west road you're talking about, sir, most confident.
And that's an access to the property?
That would be, that would be access, that would be access to the homes, as Council Member was asking.
Okay.
Yes.
Because I thought, I thought you said to the project.
That's right, and that's, that's where I got confused, because it's not access to the prop, to the project, it's only access to those homes.
But, I mean, to, to answer, to better answer your question, the, the concept is that there is to be easements for public use on this road, so the properties down there would be able to enjoy access onto the prop, you know, from that road.
And that access is going to be phrased how? Is it going to be for public purposes, or what is it, for access over, for ingress and egress? For access over, for ingress and egress over a private fire road? Or, I'm not sure what I'm saying, I'm trying to...
Yeah, I understand.
For the, the diff, okay.
It's my understanding, it's, it's going to be widened to public standards. Whether it's actually public or private, I don't know that answer. But there will be a guaranteed access or perpetual easement that properties down, the old railroad road can, can use.
So it will be open to public, it'll be, it'll be improved to public standards, number one. And then it'll be open to public use?
For the properties that live down there, yes, sir.
Exclusive, so nobody else can go on that road?
They could, but they would be going on someone else's, you know, they'd have to go there for a good reason.
Okay, so is it going to be gated or something? Or I'm trying to figure out how we're gonna control this. That's why I asked if it was gonna be a public road.
If it's gated, then it couldn't be a public road.
It's, it's not going to be gated. It is, it's a private road. But if that's one of the conditions the council wants to make it a public road for public dedication, the council can certainly request that we modify, that it be modified. But the...
If it's already, if, let me just say, if it's already going to be improved to public standards, then it only makes sense that we have a way of maintaining it.
Okay, this is the question time, Mayor Protem. So you're asking the questions, we'll come back and have that discussion. Do you have further questions?
Question, who was that, that's all. I just, it just makes sense to me. So if it's going to be improved to public standards, would we not want to, would we not, would the city not want it to be a public road then? So it could be maintained?
So how would it be maintained if it's not a public road?
So if it's not a public road, is any, any standard private property road that would be required to maintain the road? Let me, while we move on, let me, let me look at the record to make, to make sure that that, what the dedication is on that. Because that is, that is not a primary condition, access to the, to the project. We conditioned that road be put in to ensure, to minimize the impact to the current property owners down there. Right now, there's a road and the people that are crossing that road, at least one of them is crossing a private property and does not have the right to access that, that road. By us requiring in this project for that, for that road to be put in there, one of the requirements is that we are, he, the property, the developer has to grant access to all of the property owners across, across the, to go access a property. So let me look at the record real quick to, to look at the, the public determination on that. And I'll answer that question in a minute.
All right, thank you. Further questions, Mayor Protem? No, okay.
No.
Councilmember Robles?
I'm looking at packet page 216. And then I, I have a question for my benefit. So in 2010, we updated general plan and we, and we did zoning that we, we are looking at for this project now. But a conditional use permit is, is what in relation to zoning? Because what I'm reading is a conditional use permit's a little bit different than if the person just had outright proper zoning?
That's correct, it's, it's different. It's, it's a, a conditional use permit is considered more of a privilege and not a right. So, you know, there's, there are, there are some projects that, that actually have nuances to them that, that are, that have uses that are, that are, that really require more public oversight.
Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, so the zoning code provides generally for two types of uses. A use that's permitted by right and a use that's permitted, but it's subject to a discretionary review and conditions. So for example, building a house in a residential zone is considered a matter of right. You don't have to go through a planning process, you just have to go through building, making sure the project build, you know, the house is built in accordance with the building code. Conditional use permit process, you want to take a look at what the impacts are from the project and make sure that you're adding conditions to it to ensure you mitigate those conditions. So it's just a different review process.
What I'm trying to understand here is, is this pers, is this applicant entitled to this use that he's proposing?
Is he entitled? He, I wouldn't say he is entitled. He is permitted to do it subject to going through the conditional use permit process. And as I indicated at the very beginning of the meeting, if those findings can be made for the use, if the planning commission and/or city council on appeal can make those findings, then yes, he is entitled to it.
Okay, so then my final question is, on that page, because I've, you know, made sure that I haven't followed this project, so I would come here, you know, as a blank slate as possible. But I, I think I'm reading in the, in the, in the public comments is a concern about a number of trucks going in and out. So on that page, it's talking about trip factors. And so I, I thought I heard from staff that you're gonna have maybe 10 trips a day, but yet it's showing 500, 530 daily trips. So could you explain to us what the trips factor is gonna be with this project? With trucks and autos and...
The, it's averaged over a 24-hour basis. When the traffic impact analysis was done for this project, what it takes is a worst-case analysis. When you average it over a 24-hour period, I, I forget what it was. I, I was, I had in the, in the presentation, but it averages into, let me see if I have that. Just Carl, do you have it?
So the question was how the, the number of trips was generated? How was derived?
Well, that and then how many trucks can we expect on average day?
The average daily trips was, was, what you have is you have, when you anticipate the number of trips, you, you have a factor. And there's an ITE manual, it's, basically they have factors for different types of uses. There isn't, isn't really a factor in the manual for this specific use. So to determine what the trip generation factor was, basically, how does, how does this sort of facility, how much, how much does it generate? How many trips does it generate? We surveyed two similar facilities in other jurisdictions. Based on that survey, a factor was developed and that factor was applied to this project. And that's where we came up with a number of daily trips. That's the average daily trips, daily trips. Now whether they occur, I, there is a number of, let me see. Hold on. No, 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 no. I'm trying to get the AM PM.
Yeah, I'm wondering if it's the...
Okay, here it is, I'm sorry. Okay, so it was, okay, now we have, it's 1,172 PCEs, which passenger car equivalent. So even though it's maybe 500 and something trips, that's the equivalent, because they're trucks, it's the equivalent of passenger cars. So that there's a, there's a factor. So one, one truck trip may be equal to two passenger cars or two and a half passenger cars. So it's 1,172 PCE equivalent trips, 57 in the AM peak hours. That's the hours between 6:00 and 6:00 AM and 9:00 AM. And 31 during the PM peak hour trips, which is between 4:00 and 6:00 in the evening. So 1,172 throughout the day with 57 in the AM and 31 in the PM.
So what are the actual number of trucks that we expect?
Number of trips in what period of time, per day?
Per day, yeah.
Per day, it's 530 daily vehicle trips. Now, those are trucks, 530 trucks per day, right?
So in the per se, so is that 26 trucks in the AM and 13 trucks in the PM?
Yeah, it was 57 in the AM, ma'am, and 31 in the PM. And the rest are distributed throughout the day.
Okay, so this is more than just storage? There's gonna be 77, 57 trucks in the morning?
Over, within the morning hours, yes.
But I'm trying to understand, 57 physical trucks?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Delivering chassis and/or containers to the site.
Councilmember Allen? You have questions, Councilmember Allen?
I didn't hear you, Mayor.
I'm sorry.
I do. On packet page 191 are the Fire Department comments. And at the very top, it says the development shall have a minimum of two points of vehicular access. And I saw one.
That, Councilmember Allen, actually that, that changed and there is a condition and it did go back and it was analyzed that one access is acceptable for the site.
And where's that at? I'm, I'm not seeing that in here. I'm seeing something that says it should have two. Is there something that amended that later on?
Yes, there is, yes, there is.
Because I also noticed that, yeah, okay, that's, I, I didn't see that amendment that said that one is acceptable. Okay, thank you.
So you did see it now? You did see the amendment?
That'd be good.
Oh, you have not seen it?
I haven't seen that. I, I read through this, I didn't notice it.
Okay, Director Weiss, are you finding that?
It, it is in there and I will find that, ma'am. It'll be in the condition of approval, I know that. It would be on packet page 113, I believe. And 114. That's still showing the two. There, there is one though. I'll, I'll check the resolution on that one. But it's, but I know it went back to fire and they, they did have it down to one access point. They felt only one was necessary.
Director Weiss? You have a member of the Fire Department here?
Oh, thank you.
I didn't, I didn't condition this project and I'm sorry, I'm unaware of exactly what those conditions were. But I could see that it'd be very likely that the Fire Department initially required two access points. But in discussion with the developer and the city, we could very likely have stated that it was one access point. So while that information's not in front of you, I would take it for face value that this project's acceptable as submitted to the city.
Thank you, Chief. Mayor? Thank you.
That's sufficient?
Yes, it is.
All right. And I have a couple of questions. So perhaps somebody could help Mr. Weiss look for that while I ask my questions.
Should be in the resolution of approval.
Director Weiss? I believe the City Manager will continue looking for that. I have questions for you.
Oh, yes.
Are you ready? Let's go back to truck trips. Every single day, we will have 57, 56 trucks in the morning and 31 in the afternoon, every single day of the year? Is that what, is that what we're saying?
No, I'm in the environment, can I answer the question?
Mr. Winter?
Ma'am, that's worst-case scenario. Whether the trucks are actually gonna be there every day is a matter of how the project operates. And that's the maximum that could occur, so...
And so do we have an estimate of what it will actually be every single day?
There's no way to know what it will be every single day. It's the operational characteristics. The, the numbers that we provided were based on theoretical what it could be.
Okay.
The worst-case scenario. And the traffic, traffic impact analysis is based on the worst-case scenario. So anticipating the amount of traffic that could occur because of the project, we have to get that maximum truck trip. Now, if your projects, if the project's full and you have 600 stalls filled up with chassis and you can't accept anymore, then you won't be having any truck traffic. If, if it's half-full, you're gonna have maybe half the truck traffic. But it all depends on what the operational characteristics at any point in time is.
Okay. So do we know what the average amount of time trailers and chassis will be stored?
That would probably be a question best raised to the applicant.
How about, will this be a logistics center? Is this considered a logistics center?
It's not a logistics center, no.
Can, can it be converted to a logistics center in the future?
It cannot, it cannot.
Why, why can it not?
Because there's empty trailers. There's no, there's no warehouse or distribution. This is purely an area where they drop the trailers off, then they go to the different logistics centers. They pick up and they go to the port of LA, Long Beach, or inland. That's the whole purpose behind it.
In addition to that, Mayor, it's, you know, it is, it's under conditional use permit. And if they wanted to change the operation to be able to go to a logistics center, they'd have to come back to the, to the, to the governing body to request that, that change. The conditional use permit does not allow for a logistics center. Any structure that has to be built, they have to get permission to do that.
Okay, so can it expand beyond the footprint of what it is being proposed right now?
It has, no, because it's approved based on this configuration.
Okay. And there's a project across Locadina in Colton right now?
Yes.
Which I believe is a logistics center?
It is, it's a high cube logistics center.
Is this related to that project?
In terms of, I, I don't know your question on that, but I do know there's two buildings going in there and a future fire station on Tropic Arancho Road in Locadina.
Okay.
Those are 200, one is about 220,000, the other one's smaller, about 85,000.
Okay. You mentioned the City of Colton did have a chance to comment on this project.
Yes.
And they had some concerns? Were they satisfied with the mitigation?
Yes, we met with them twice and, and it's actually a good solution we're working out. It's, it's to provide safety in the area.
Okay. And then during your staff report, you mentioned that this will not be injurious to the neighborhood. And how do you determine that?
Because it will not go to the neighborhood. It goes down North Terrace and it goes, it's the only road it can go from Barton to, to North Terrace Road. It doesn't go into the neighborhood.
Okay. That's the last of my questions. All right, any further questions before we go to written comments? Councilmember Robles?
Can't the number of trucks be conditioned?
Well, the way it works, and this is where I was trying to kind of direct your attention. We're work, also working with the applicant on an operations plan right now. So right now, they're, they're looking at approximately 2.1 units per hour during a 10-hour workday. I think the reason this is hard to answer is because when you model for traffic, you model it over a 24-hour weighted period. And you always take the most conservative approach to this. You know, this is, this is a one in, one out, one road in completely. I mean, this, this is, these are trailers and axles, basically. That's, that's what this is. They drop off a trailer, you know, and it might sit there a day, it might... They drop off a trailer, you know, and it might sit there a day, it might sit there a week, it might, they might make two trips a day out of that. But it's not something where, you know, I mean, to the noticeable eye, when you look at, for example, the freeway, that the 215 does in excess of 400,000 trips a day, I mean, that's, that means you're having cars that are bumper-to-bumper. It's not going to be in this situation. We also have conditions in there where they cannot stack the trailers, and they cannot stack at intersections. So that's, that'll be part of the operations plan, and we'll be monitoring this every year.
Further questions?
And I do apologize about this fire comment, but I do know that it went back to them, and I will provide it with you, to you. You just caught me.
All right, so that is our question time. So we will go to written comments. Madam City Clerk, will you please prize us of written comments that were sent to you?
Yes, Madam Mayor. We received 12 emails, and we did receive another one that unfortunately is not in your packet at the dais that was sent via email here, and it's sitting in my outlook. Their majority of these individuals oppose the project. And I can list their names for you if you'd like. I can read the emails. What would you like?
Does council want to hear the emails?
I read them all.
Okay. Will you read the one that came in? Summarize what came in. List the names, please, and then read to us the one that came in.
Okay.
And then these are entered into the record, so they are a matter of record, even though you're not reading them all out to us.
Of course. Of course. So we did receive 12 emails that appro, excuse me, that oppose the project that's before you this evening. Those individuals that oppose this project are, and forgive me if I do not pronounce everybody's name correctly, Christina Linsley, Darrell and Kelly Bruhl, Lori Hawkins, Jody Barnett, Janet and John Howard, Leslie and Fred Wright, Juanita Odenbaugh, however, hers is kind of a 50/50. Sue Clenden, Clenden, Terry Santos, Mr. and Mrs. Trujillo, Jennifer Herken, Susan Grooms. And the email, the email that we received this evening is from Donald Kluge, who states, "Once again, let me reiterate my opinion of the trailer parking facility in Grand Terrace. The approval for such facility, as I said in the attached previous letter, will only serve to bring down the vision of the city which, with the opening of the new freeway improvement roundabout and the beautiful Grand Terrace monument, and the beautiful brass city sign are positive improvements. I have doubts that this many diesel trucks and trailers will not cause damage to the new off-ramp developments. The city has a rich history of being a quiet, calm, clean, and close-knit community, a safe one. Bringing in a storage facility such as the proposed one will only serve to bring in the blight that plagues nearby San Bernardino. Please find my previous letter reattached. Sincerely, Donald Kluge."
Great. And that was the last written comment?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So I will open the public hearing at this time, and I'll invite the appealing party to come in. Have five minutes.
Hello. Janice Maksinoff, do I have to give my address? Anyway, everybody knows I live down there in that project. I'm not an expert. I haven't been educated, but I have lived down there about 25 years. And I do know something about, what is it? You guys were saying that it will be a slag access road? Those are dirty. Those are so dirty. My husband and I have been in the demolition business for quite some time. So I do understand the slag access road, which will be dirty, and that, all of that will blow up on us. And it's basically concrete dust. It's a dirty, dirty thing. You guys have, you know, read my appeal, so I don't want to waste my time going over that. Has there been any discussion on what Colton's going to do with Terrace Avenue? You've been down there, you've been down there. It barely fits two cars. So what's going to be the access? That is our access in and out. Anybody that lives down there, that is our access. So Terrace Avenue, and I understand that it belongs to Colton, but it needs to be fixed. You can't have those trucks going up and down Terrace Avenue. There's people walking there, there's kids on bicycles. I know it's Colton, and it's not your problem, but it's going to be somebody's problem. I haven't talked to anybody in the neighborhood that has been in favor of this project. I mean, we're all residences, we've all live here, do everything. I just can't believe that you guys would allow this type of dirty industry to come into our town. And we all know how the Santa Ana's blow, and we all know all of that's going to end up right up on top in the residential area. I have kind of been resigned to where I'm at, and it's an unusual position. I know that every, they want to do a lot with that area as far as trucks, trailers, because they've been trying to get trucking in there for 15, 20 years. Any of you that have, like, driven down Aguamanza, have been in Bloomington, have been in Fontana, you have seen what's happened to the neighborhoods. Right now, my husband is working on a neighborhood right off of Cedar or Sierra, and it's a whole neighborhood. Houses are gone. The residents are gone. They're just flattening it so that they can put a logistics company in there. And I'm afraid that's going to happen to us on the West Side. You know, we're west of the freeway, Lockadina's right there. How many, how many houses are up there? There's not that many houses. And it wouldn't take long for somebody to start buying them up, and then that whole area's going to be gone. And it'll really be sad. I know there was a couple other things, just listening to him talking, that there's not going to be a problem turning right onto Barton Road off of Terrace Avenue. I can't do it in my pickup truck with a horse trailer. How is a semi going to do it? And if you think you're not, if you think you're going to stop these trucks going through the neighborhood, you guys are just fooling yourself. Trucking is money. And if they have to sit there at that stoplight or stop sign at Terrace and Barton for more than five minutes, they're going to find another way, and it's going to be right through the neighborhood. So don't think you're going to fix it by saying, oh, you can't do that, because it's not going to happen. Truckers can go wherever they need to go. And I don't know if the city was aware of this engineering. It was O'Brien's other project on the other side of Lockadina. And because they've raised all of that area, it has changed our floodplain zone. Did we know about this?
If you'll hand that to the city clerk, and...
This is my only copy. Can you make a copy of it?
And that is your five minutes. Did you have one last thing you wanted to wrap up with?
No, that's it. Yeah, it's been going on for 25 years.
Thank you, Ms. Maksinoff.
Thank you.
All right. And it is time for our applicant's comments at this time.
Well, what a night. David Molarsky with TransTech Engineers representing the applicant. Mr. Greg Johnson is on Zoom, listening to the meeting. He's got some health issues, or he would have been here tonight. And Mr. O'Brien is actually out of the state due to some prior commitments, because, quite frankly, we didn't know when we were going to get here. But we appreciate, you know, everybody's indulgence. I mean, there's been a lot of information discussed tonight, and to try to cover it all in five minutes is going to be a little bit difficult. But we, we believe in the record, we believe in the project, the way it was processed with the city and the staff and the environmental work that was done. We think we've satisfied all of the requirements. We've negotiated with staff for two years on certain aspects of the project, so this wasn't something that just got dumped into the city process and stamped for approval. We actually were here in 2017 when the city council was listening to a zoning item regarding this area of the community. We were considering whether or not to remove the industrial designation from this neighborhood in favor of an agricultural use. And in part, because of the action that was taken by this body that evening, the applicant decided to move forward with submitting an application, because the council's decision that evening was to maintain the industrial zoning. In fact, I think the property's probably been zoned industrial prior to the city incorporating in 1978 under the old county general plan. So this area didn't transition into something different. The properties that have been developed in and around here are no different than a lot of transitional areas and areas like South Rialto and Fontana, so. But quickly, I want to hit on a few of these items, just to clear the record. That private roadway easement is an easement. It's not a road dedication, it's not on the city's circulation element. It is in favor of certain property owners. What the applicant, excuse me, dry mouth. What the applicant agreed to do was to eliminate a current conflict that exists on that access road. That easement is actually misplaced, and there are telephone poles in the middle of that access easement. And individuals have been trespassing on certain property in that neighborhood for all these years. So the applicant worked with the Edison Company, and per staff's request, we installed a road, or will be installing a road, north of those existing power poles. As far as the road being dirty, it's currently a dirt road. It's about as dirty as you can get. So people are driving up and down the dirt road across private property, and the applicant has agreed to try to solve that situation. With regard to traffic, please understand, this is a storage facility. There are no containers coming onto the site with goods like a logistics facility. These are going to be empties, empties chassis, empty containers. They're stored during peak hours on and off throughout the year. So the purpose is, is to try to take trailers and trucks off of the roads, off of the freeways, driving back and forth from the inland empire back to the port of LA and port of Long Beach. There'll be periods of time where this yard will be inactive. There'll be months where the yard will be inactive. So that speaks to the difficulty in coming up with a daily trip number, because it is a tough analysis for a yard of this nature. If this was a high-doc, high-cube logistics facility, you could measure those trucks, and there are a lot of trucks. As, well, I'm going to lose my time here. We, yeah, we, we really have tried to follow all of the rules, follow all the processes, and provide information to the public in order to try to make this project a very good project. We have a operations manual that we're going to be submitting to the council for their consideration, which is going to regulate this project. And if it's violated, this project can come back in front of the city, and that conditional use permit can be pulled. So that's your arm. With five seconds left to go, we're just looking for your favorable consideration. I'm more than welcome to, happy to answer any questions you may have about this project. I think there was some ambiguity, and I'd be here to set the record straight. I'll include some more comments during the rebuttal, though. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Molarsky. All right. It is time for oral testimony from the public. Do we have requests to speak during this time?
Mayor, can I just set the record straight on the fire access?
Director Weiss?
Page...
Please, please set us straight.
Page 207, number 15. And this is from the May 21st Planning Commission. That's the question of the two access points. Planning and development confirms San Bernardino fire will require one. The project rivalry meets San Bernardino County fire access. And there's condition number 20, that they'll submit plans to San Bernardino and comply with the conditions under permit number FPLN 2019-00163.
Thank you, Director Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss.
All right, our first speaker is Rita Schwark. Would you like a microphone brought to you? You're all right?
I'm Rita. Can you hear me okay with this thing on?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Rita Schwark. I live on Grand Terrace Road. Please, please, do not approve this project. Because you guys are still asking questions about it, that means there's still a doubt about this. And correct me if I'm wrong on any of this. The hours, oh, are they going to lock the gate at 8 o'clock with a lock combination on all this? A truck comes in, I've got an emergency, I just got in town. There's always going to be an emergency with these truckers. Where are they going to wait? Are they going to wait in Stater Brothers parking lot? Are they going to wait in the fitness park? Carhartt? Are they going to wait on my street? In the wintertime, when the engine's running, they got to keep heat. In the summertime, they got to keep cool, they're going to have these running. I heard fitness park mentioned twice. I live across the street from there. This is a family park. I'm not against truckers, per se, but can you imagine going over there and taking a shower in the bathroom? 10 of them? Because you're going to have 10 trucks. There's always going to be an emergency. And who's going to decide whether it's an emergency or not? Are they going to call you? They're going to call you, they're going to call you. Who's going to decide? One person or a panel? Why don't they ask the people that live there? Nobody asked me about my comfort zone there, did they? People walk on Grand Terrace Road. There are no sidewalks. They walk in the street. Truckers are not going to pay attention to the no-truck sign. They go where they want to go. During construction, that road will be used all the time. I know about dust. I can't even leave my windows open. I don't like the dust in a way, but the fact is, it's very dusty. And another thing, they're going to be taking up a lot of space at Stater Brothers. And it's kind of called maybe like extortion, where we're going to have 10 trucks over here. They're going to take up valuable parking spaces at Stater Brothers, on my street, any place they can find a parking with the motors running, air pollution, dusk. Also, another thing, we have very narrow streets, and the signs on the street would be a joke. They're not going to pay attention to it, okay? The fitness park, we don't want, like I say, I'm not against truckers. This is a family park. I heard it was amenities to use in there, cannot be used. Please do not affect or approve this project as yet, because there's too many questions still being asked about this project. I beg of you. I live on the West Side. Nobody asked me about this. They didn't come to me. Was I uncomfortable with it? How do you feel about it? They didn't come to the West Side and ask anybody about their, if they want this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schwark. Ken Stewart?
Mayor, city council. My name is Ken Stewart. Live on Blue Lupa and Circle.
Live on Blue Lupa and Circle. I'd like to thank the Planning Commission and City Hall staff for taking the time to curate and consult with individuals in developing the conditional use permit for an outdoors trailer storage yard. As a city, I know we are trying to maintain our quality of life while building our local economy, and it can be accomplished. However, upon reviewing the Planning Commission meeting video, the agenda, reports, public comments, and driving through the proposed site, I recommend that the council vote no for these reasons. Property values, I haven't read anything suggesting that the property values will go up or down. Sequo didn't address this. The issues or responses document tried to answer the question. And even though there aren't any readily identifiable or environmental impacts linking physical changes which can contribute to an increase or decrease in property values, I wouldn't want to move into a community that is very close to this facility. I suspect that property values near the proposed site will go down, and that would be a blow to those who live near the site, and that is not fair. Number two, truck traffic. With increased traffic comes increased accidents, noise pollution, and if I was living near the site, I wouldn't want to fight with trucks on a consistent basis when leaving and coming back home. This will affect our public health. So just to reiterate, City Hall staff and Planning Commission, thank you for your two-year commitment in getting this project done and submitted for a vote. In closing, I believe we can solicit other potential developers for this site. Here are some ideas, and these are just ideas, a park, an art center, a state-of-the-art telehealth center. My point is, we can accomplish a project that maintains our quality of life, strengthens our economy, and keeps us safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stewart. Edward Drew?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and City Council. My name is Ed Drew. I'm a city of, member of the city of Grand Terrace, and I'm also a member of the Planning Commission, and I was one of the ones that recused myself. The recusal was not for the reasons that typically live too close, have a conflict, that type of thing. The afternoon before the meeting, someone called the city and made an accusation, and I spoke with somebody in the community and asked them to come here and object to this project, which that never absolutely happened. I immediately sent an email to the FPPC to get an opinion about being able to discuss something from a nominist caller. There was no way to investigate this. Obviously, nothing came back from the FPPC before I was able to be here at the meeting. However, staff and City Council, City Attorney, we had quite a good debate over that afternoon and the next day over whether I should do this, and the decision for me to recuse myself wasn't forced on me. I understood that the accusation was against me, not the Planning Commission, and I needed to defend the seat of the Planning Commission, so that is the reason why I recused myself. But if I was here, I would have opposed the project. Whether this is a project that meets the zoning code requirements, the Planning Commission has passed things previously because it did meet the zoning requirements, and it has been reversed by the Planning Commission because it did not fit the neighborhood, and this is one of them. However, for some of the project, I really feel that what we're being promised, that they're going to have briefings with the truck drivers to keep them out of our neighborhood, it's not going to happen. The City Council under 35701 of the vehicle code has the authority to make those decisions, where commercial vehicles can go and where they can't go. So for their offer off a terrace road onto Walnut and on the Vivienda with the signs, you would be in compliance with 35701 to say yes, because it is, those roads are not a direct path to this facility. Because 35703 says your ordinance is, doesn't exist if it's a direct path. And that's part of the problem in this town, not just with this area, but other areas within the city. We have commercial areas where we're going to have to allow commercial trucks to drive on roadways that they're not allowed to be on. So for those reasons, I think we need to put the, in your plan, it was only Walnut and Vivienda that had the sign restrictions. There was nothing for Grand Terrace Road. Grand Terrace Road and Vivienda would be a direct access road to this facility. So not only if we put up the sign, it's still a direct road access. We have to put in positive reinforcement not to allow truck traffic to turn right or head north on Vivienda. May I speak just a little bit more on this project?
If you wrap it up.
Okay. Well, the reason for it is, in a lot of communities now, when they exit a freeway system, trucks get, automatically get lost, and they start turning into residential areas. They have what's called positive direction right turn lanes. All it is is a raised divider, four inches high, it could be about a foot wide, and it could be accommodated on Barton Road before you turn north onto, excuse me, north onto Grand Terrace Road. And it would blend in within all the other islands that are established in that area with the little rock and the river rock in between it. And with that, it would still allow the school buses to turn. It would allow Edison's two-axle trucks to need to go to their plant, or UPS, or any of the other trucks, but would prevent big rigs and anybody hauling a long trailer to turn right there.
Thank you, Mr. Drew.
And in addition to that, to prove that traffic going west on Vivienda from Grand Terrace Road is bad, the school buses don't even go that way. There's too many blind curves west of Grand Terrace Road, so when those buses are going through there, the long buses, not the short buses, they can't, because of the three blind curves. So.
Thank you, Mr. Drew.
I had more, but thank you.
Harry Russo's?
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council, and I thank you for the time to speak tonight. I heard a lot of talk, and the truth is not coming out. This project should be rejected, and it shouldn't have been coming, shouldn't be in front of you tonight. This project should have been rejected a long time ago. This is a high risk for the city with very low income coming in, and the reasons are very many. This city, by approving this project, we have an enormous number of trucks bringing trailers into that valley. I am one of the largest property owners in that specific area. I have several houses on top of the hill. I see what's going on. You cannot say that there are not going to be fumes, carbon monoxide, noise, traffic jams, floods from 215, I mean, 215 rains that come through my property and they go down there. Last year, we had a storm, a strong storm, and there were four feet of water in that area. These trailers would be flying, would be floating into the river, the San Ana River going to the ocean. And you hear the engineers tonight, he says, he said, it's going to be a storage. You know, who is that person who is going to invest millions of dollars on land, on trucks, on trailers, and have them sitting in the parking lot day in and day out? He can't possibly make it up. He cannot make it up. They have to move them, otherwise this project will go bankrupt. If you have so many millions of dollars in investment in land and in trucks and trailers, and nothing moves, how are they going to make any money? Who are they fooling? Please, please, this project came too long. This project should be rejected. You have a very capable city manager here. Please ask him to go out and try to get some projects, some other companies. We can have there a nursery. We can have there a sports field. We can have there some other project, you know, that will be beneficial for the company. It will be beneficial for the people who live in this city. It will be beneficial for us.
Thank you, Mr. Russo's.
We own the property, and I'll finish in 30 seconds. Myself, if this project goes through, I already hired an appraiser. I have several properties in that area. I'm one of the major property owners in that area. I'm, and I'm affected in a big way. And I want to appraise these properties, and I guarantee you as a night long that if this project goes through, our property will go in half. Property values will go in half. You will have a lawsuit unless instruct the city manager tomorrow to go and increase your liability insurance. You cannot make this thing up. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Russo's.
Please reject it, this project.
Thank you, Mr. Russo's.
Thank you for the time.
Jeffrey McConnell?
Jeffrey McConnell, Grand Terrace Farm, right across the street. Two years ago, I lead, led the neighborhood to try and rezone this back to a ranch residential one-house-per-acre. And that's when Mr. Duffy said, we can make this a green zone, and we can get grants for a green zone. And so here tonight, we're putting a trucking facility right in the middle of a green zone, which is totally ludicrous. Multiple things. Number one, Terrace Avenue, during the manhole builders, it seemed to be, old-time engineer said that was built, those were built by the railroads. They're substandard, not the city standard. They're going to just repave them and widen them, that they've never been, according to him, was never compacted properly. There's currently, if you go on the west side of CLS on Terrace Avenue, there's constant sagging, cave-ins. In 06, during the manhole builders battle, there was a cave-in so big, I actually stuck my entire leg in it. I took a picture. I should have submitted that to you. That is the substandard, was built substandard, not to public works, and that has never been fully established or conditioned by the Planning Commission. The trucks, 90 trucks or so a day, according to the EIR that I read, it's coming and going up and down Terrace to destroy it. The $10,000 a year for 10 years is borderline bribe, and we're going to be stuck with the tearing up of the streets all the way to the freeway. It's going to cost us money. This project does not bring any sales tax, doesn't really raise the property tax, there's no permanent buildings, so it's actually going to cost us more in the long run. They're going to park up to 640 truck trailers and shipping containers on slag or ground asphalt, whichever, and years of pounding trucks over it, plus the moving of vehicles and shipping containers on site will just turn that into dust. Santa Ana winds, which, if you've been down there, this environmental report, this report, he said it was December to January, that's not during the Santas. It blows enormous amount of speed, and it takes all the fine particles and blasts them right through any crack in your window or house, and the neighbors here will attest to that. So broken-down slag and concrete is, you're going to have Aaron Brockovich here with that sort of thing, just like they did over at the Portland, over in Bloomington. So that's a danger to health. That's not, that's, the EIR said it's not endangered to health. That's, that's bolder dash. It's compatible with the residential neighborhood, it said. That's hors d'oeuvre, too. So I really have serious doubts about this EIR report. And basically, what it comes down to is either you protect your constituents in this neighborhood or you protect the outside investor. And I can guarantee you, whichever way everybody votes tonight, it's going to show up on the video, Facebook, and the local newspapers, this election and the one in two years.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. Shawna Simon?
Hi. My name is Shawna Simon. Property 21797 Vivienda Avenue. My house lives on the bluff, so I'll actually be looking at this property. Now, I have two kids. We all have asthma. I'm concerned about all these trucks bringing in all of this smoke. Now, I know the impact says there's no impact, but I'm sorry, having that many vehicles, that many trucks coming in, that's going to impact my kids' health, my health, not including all of the dust and stuff that they, everybody was talking about? Yes, that brings up into our neighborhood right there. I'm worried about the trucks going in the city. It happens to us all the time. We have to sometimes stop them and say, hey, you can't make this turn because it's going to go over. So then they have to back up. So trucks do come in our neighborhood, and especially right now with the pandemic, there are loads of kids and families out walking. We're bicycling, and there's no sidewalks. There's no place to put a sidewalk because we have small streets. And especially on, even on the one that they're talking about, you can't safely put two vehicles and a bike lane there. There, it's not safe. And talk about the bike lane, they're talking about putting in a bike lane that'll go past the property, the front of the property. I don't feel safe having my kids going, oh, yeah, you could go to the bike lane down there. Go in, go in front of the trucking company. Those trucks are not going to be able to stop, and someone is going to get hurt. And I also have a problem about the property that if it gets sold, what happens to that permit that we put on it? Ken, is it going to transfer to the next company? Because Mr. O'Brien, that's what he does. He buys properties, builds them, sells them. But you'll find out about that. Now about the, they, they were talking about a maintenance building that's 4,800 square feet, 12 permanent employees. If this is supposed to be a small, a small grand thing, why is there so many employees? If they're only going to be fixing mirrors and lights, well, then why are there so many, why is such a big maintenance building? It's, it just seems like they're, they keep saying things that aren't true, just like in the past meetings, they told us it was only going to be like 10 trucks that were going to come a day. Now you guys find out, now we all find out the truth, it's going to be 50-some trucks a day. And that, and Mr. Weiss keeps saying, something gets brought up, and he goes, oh, I'll talk about that later. We'll figure out that later. Well, we'll give you that information later, but then you guys have to rule on it. Please deny this. Just, just flat-out deny it. It's not good. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simon. Bobby Forbes?
Thank you. I appreciate everyone from the neighborhood that has spoke, and I don't want to read all four pages that I have written because much of it would be repeat performative. And I thank the people that sent the letters. I would like you to be aware, as a council, that there were 30 letters, I believe, maybe 28 that were read at the last Planning Commission meeting. Only a few of those are repeated in this packet tonight. So that's more people that are now paying attention to this project and opposing the project. And these people live in different places in the community. They don't just live in our neighborhood west of the freeway. So the date of the traffic or AQMD, I'm not sure of the right verbiage for that, was done over Christmas vacation 2019. Good weather usually at that time of year. Maybe we get a little bit of rain, but it's usually pretty clear weather, and there's not a lot of traffic. It wasn't during the COVID, but it's still not a time of year that a lot of people are out. You can tell truck drivers where to go, but they're going to go where they want to go. We already know that. They're going to sit where they want to sit and where they feel like they need to. I do it with my cellphone, anywhere in Grand Terrace. If you see my white Jeep parked in front of your house, it's because I'm on the phone because I don't want to get caught driving down the road. And so they're going to do the same thing, only they're peeing in their Gatorade bottles, and they chuck them out the window because they don't want them sitting on the floor where the trash could be. And they have to make a living. Their goal is to make a living. Patrick O'Brien's goal is to profit from this project. Otherwise, he wouldn't be doing it. How could it possibly sit there? Like Mr. Harry Russo said, his goal is to make money. Those trailers aren't going to sit there. They're about to put the United States Postal Service out of business with all these deli- They're about to put the United States Postal Service out of business with all these deliveries. My neighbor gets a delivery every 20 minutes from a truck and never know which truck it is, but usually it stops in front of my house first because there's no house numbers and there's no streetlights and we don't have sidewalks. We have substandard streets within our neighborhood. Jeffrey and I used to make a big joke out of the trucks being lost in the neighborhood and we would help them and we would go out and I just laugh at them now. I don't even wave, hey, you can't come this way anymore. I just let them go. If they fall over, they fall over, it's their own darn fault, they should be paying attention to where they're going. But the maps make it look like you can take Grand Terrace Road and Vivienda and make those curves and get down to this project. They're going to go where they want to go. So I think the neighborhood feels defeated by the planning commission's decision. I'm grateful that Janice made this appeal. Please carefully review what is before you. You all live here. You all interact with us on a regular basis for many of the things that we do in this community. A better project can be found. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Forbes. All right, and that was my last speaker slip. So we will come back to appealing party. Ms. Maxinoff, you have another five minutes.
Can I give it to someone else?
Nope. It's your turn to rebut anything that you heard.
Other than Mr. O'Brien's spokesperson, everybody is opposed to the project, so I don't really know too much about what I'm going to rebuttal.
And that is your choice?
Yeah. I mean, conversation tonight, I sat and listened and it was like whenever something left a bad taste in my mouth, everybody started talking a lot faster and going through stuff, not going, oh, we don't need to read all of this, you know? And it's stuff that, how many trucks are going to be there? How much access is there to the, to the project? And where is the parking for the community garden? Nobody ever said. It's going to be on our access road. We're going to have cars parked there to access the community garden. And I don't know, it just is a bad project all the way around. I mean, something's going to go there someday, but let's, let's be smart about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maxinoff. Right, applicant, you have five minutes.
Mr. [inaudible]. Look, I know this is a tough situation. I don't live in the city of Grand Terrace, but I do live in a city and I've had to deal with land use decisions and so on and so forth. But this piece of property is a challenged piece of property. That's one of the reasons it was identified for this type of use. It's in a floodplain, it's got high transmission power lines cutting through eight or nine acres, which has some very restrictive uses that you can do with this site. For somebody to try to turn this into a developable piece of property, you'd have to bring in hundreds of thousands of yards of material and really raise this area out of the floodplain and really impact properties around the area. It's just not economically feasible. We tried to prepare and produce a project that met certain criteria for the city and for the region. And it is to take vehicles off the road, not put more vehicles on the road. This is, this is a storage facility and the gentleman is wrong. They get paid to store containers and chassis. They don't make any money if the containers and chassis are out of the yard. So it's just the opposite of what the expert is trying to tell you. And I must say, I am frustrated at the mischaracterization, the statements made about something that isn't even built yet, hasn't even been operating, and all of the dispersions about individuals' character, what their intent is, the fact that they don't care about the city, they don't care about the community. And I understand it, I get that. I also get, it's an election year in November. So individuals are going to say certain things and do certain things in order to try to obtain their objective. We came to the city and I'm a professional consultant, okay? I'm not a hired gun. I don't work just to try to push something through just to get a paycheck. People that know me, I think, know that we always try to bring projects forward that make sense and we always try to do things to make those projects fit. We've got an active rail spur on one side that has trains running up and down it all during the day and the night. We have another rail spur on the east. We have a flood control area to the north. And this is at the very pinnacle, most western point of the city. We respect and we understand the individuals that have bought property in the area over the years and that live there. But this piece of property has similar property rights. We've gone through all of the hoops, we've negotiated, we've conceded, we've accepted conditions that quite frankly, other projects of this nature have not had to accept. And that's the city's right and we did that in good faith. And I don't think there was anything that we agreed to that we thought was in bad taste. We've, we've been involved with community meetings and the operations plan that the applicant is going to implement is going to be a good plan. It's going to provide the city with all the teeth and the mechanism. And I think this project is going to be a great project for the community. Talking about projects in other cities or talking about trucks that came from who knows where, I mean, we can't respond to that. The appeal, the three items in the appeal, there's really no comment that we can make because quite frankly, there's nothing there that really speaks to our project. These are emotions and feelings. We understand people live in communities and our goal is to try to integrate this. So we're looking for your understanding. The record is exhaustive, it's quite clear, hours of testimony and exhibits. We would respectfully ask you to uphold your staff and your planning commission's decision. I think they were thoughtful and considerate. And other than that, we just hope that the city sees this as a valuable asset to their community as we do. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Menlovsky. All right, we will close the public hearing. And it is time to come back to the council and deliberate this item. And as we discussed, it would be appropriate to have a motion to begin our deliberations with.
I'll make a motion so we can deliberate.
All right, Councilmember Hesse. Your motion is?
Well, I just want, you know, have a discussion period, I mean, that's.
Right, and so we'll have a motion in a second.
Yes.
And then we will discuss that. So what is your motion?
Well, it says right here on the resolutions, it says, consider adoption of the resolution of planning commission articulate California adopting migrant negativity declaration. So whatever this resolution is, I'll make a motion just so we have.
Okay, so a motion to uphold the planning commission's findings?
Yes.
All right.
Okay.
All right, and Mayor Protam seconds that. All right, so we will now move forward with our deliberation. Councilmember Hesse.
Okay, well, first of all, I want to thank everybody for coming out here tonight. You know, when you're on the council, you have, you read all the facts. And as we were brought to, you know, I know it's election year, I thought that was kind of a threat on that part. But, you know, we have an open mind. And I was going one way, then I went the other way, so flip flops. So here's, here's some of my things that I want to discuss. It's, I mean, I wrote down a lot of notes, bear with me, is, you know, I love the pros of it, you know, taking care of that down there for the community garden, the access for the Santa Ana trails. But, you know, what really caught my eye and ear are the number of trucks that was brought up that would stand out. The truck traffic, I mean, we can't control the truck traffic coming up Mount Vernon Hill. I mean, we put signs out there and the trucks are still coming. So that's stuck out. I mean, we have a truck route, well, there are Pacific Truck Route, and these trucks are going to go through the neighborhood. I remember, and everybody remembers how the, the truck traffic was when the state of Rose warehouses were. You don't want to be in that area at a certain time. You're taking your kids, my kids went to Colton High School, it was crazy, you were stuck. It was, the trucks is pulled out in front of you. The trucks, they do get lost, they have no rhyme or reason where they're going. So I'm seeing a worst case scenario come back. Emergency, I know the, she talked about, you know, the emergency for, you know, the egress and stuff. Then we talked about the hazardous, and we talked about how many fires we have during hazard, you know, my biggest concern, you have all those trucks, those trailers there, and then that's a hazardous condition itself. One fire and I don't know how close they're going to be stacked, this is going to be one after another after another. I mean, that's what we went through on the, when we had the tire recycle place over here, they overdid it. And that's why I'm getting back for Tiger, on the Tiger recycle idea, because we mitigate, we put certain rules and regulations in, and then the business owner's not saying that this business owner's going to do it, but they seem to deviate from the path, from the regulations. Then it's a burden on the city to go there and enforce regulations and we got to get the county involved and everything else. So that went through my mind. I would think that, to do that project, you know, I know we got a rail system going through and you got that, that smog and noise and everything else that's happening. I know we have problems down there in that, that zone with the homeless encampments, we have fires, let them ride down there. Illegal dumping, it's just pathetic. But my main thing that came back to me is that truck traffic and affecting the neighborhoods. And I see it, I walk all the time, like I said, I was open minded about this project. I mean, I love all the stuff that's going to be done, but then I got to look at the big term, the long term and the big picture, and that's that truck traffic. And, and what Bobby Forbes said, when I walk, I see Gatorade bottles everywhere. It's disgusting, they don't care. And then also, my last point on that thing is, the trucks that are coming through, I worked in, in Long Beach at Terminal Island, at the federal prison there, I dealt with those trucks constantly. And those trucks weren't up to par. And I'm thinking about the, and those, the drivers made money back, the more routes they did, the more they got. I know this is a, a storage facility, but my biggest concern, besides the traffic, is how many trucks is going to be there and the cluster, I don't want to be political on terms there, but the cluster it's going to cause and then the impact on the neighborhoods and the trucks getting lost. So that's all, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Allen?
Thanks, Mayor. The two things that I was concerned about with this project was initially, when I read about it, was the fumes from the trucks and the, and the potential for dust. And in reading it over the staff report and in talking with Mr. Wise about, and I learned about that they're actually going to use, I know that the applicant has concerns and mentioned the use of slag, but my understanding is they're actually going to be using RAP, the recycled asphalt product, which is, I don't know which provides, which is a, has the potential for more dust, but my understanding is, is that, that the RAP is not quite as bad. But then again, I got to thinking about the whole environment down there with the perpetual winds coming from the north and that sandy riverbed kicking up the sand there. And then, you know, the farmland getting tilled and plowed and the dust getting kicked up from that. And I thought, well, you know, this is probably the way that they're going to pave it down and compact it, they'll probably won't have that much of a, of a dust problem. And, you know, Councilmember Hesse alluded to this on the truck traffic that comes up Mount Vernon slope. We have, nobody in this city is immune to truck traffic. We get complaints from people on observation, Van Buren, the trucks headed over to High Grove to those new warehouses over there. I live on Brentwood, trucks come up through there to avoid going through that Mount, the Mount Vernon Barton intersection. You know, trucks go all over this city. And so nobody's got like an exclusivity on having lost truckers or, or big trucks going through their neighborhood. It happens to all of us periodically at some point. And so I just want you to know that we, we feel for you there, we're, we're together with you on that. That's the only, I, I think now that I learned that, that they're using the recycled asphalt product and to help reduce the, keep the dust as low as possible and widening the road to make it safe, it'll be fine.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Mayor Protam, did you have comments?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Hesse, you had more comments?
You know, like I said, I wrote three notes, thank you, Mayor. You know, what I hear too on the council, and I know we have some business owners on here that did a letter and real estate agents, but one of the things that I hear constantly, I'm sorry if you didn't hear me, is we're not a user friendly for opening businesses in this town, we're not business friendly. I think, you know, we're working on that, we're business friendly, but for the correct business. I appreciate everything that they've done for all this stuff to do, you know, get this project going and everything. But I also, the gentleman there, the property value, our biggest investment as a homeowner is our property. And as a council member, you know, I worked for everything I had too, you know, we don't get paid big bucks like people think. But I know people's number one investment is their homes. So as a council member, I really look at people's property value and will it affect the property value? Do we do a study on that? I don't know, I didn't ask that question. That was one thing I'd like to see, what the property value study would be for the affecting areas. And one last thing, my wife has her, not business, but she works out of the house. And for her to work out that house, because this lady mentioned it, we had to go through all the residents and get a signature, and we had certain restrictions when stuff can be dropped off and stuff, we don't sell anything. But the neighborhood, the neighbors had to approve that. She's saying that it was never brought to the neighbors and the neighbors didn't approve this project? I don't know, was it? That's a question I forgot to ask. So that was, that was a big thing that stood out. That's just last my comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Hesse, you live in a residential area and generally for residential businesses, they have to have a home occupancy permit. I had to have that for my home business. And I believe because this is an industrial area, it's a different zoning for that, so that the setup is different. And clearly, there's a public hearing. And, and I'm listening to a lot of the, the residents and I, and I certainly understand that they don't want, they don't want a building here. I also know that there were residents that didn't want our senior villas and our senior center built because it was vacant land and they wanted to leave it vacant. And I heard a lot of the, the reasons why with respect to ambulances coming at all hours of the night and the air conditioning that would be very noisy and would keep the neighbors awake. And what I know to be true about the unknown is that we can make it very scary. I'm hearing complaints about trucks that exist right now and not approving this project doesn't change that condition. It sounds to me like we need to have a better way to control that truck traffic. And so Mr. Drew mentioned some ways that we could condition Grand Terrace and Vivienda, and I think that those probably need to be added to the conditional use permit. and I think that those probably need to be added to the conditional use permit. I think we need to get serious about how we, how we keep track of the trucks just in general in our city. But I don't think that this particular project should have to pay the price for the bad actors that exist right now, especially if there's a way to keep track of the trucks that go in and out of that site, and there's a mechanism for penalizing this business owner, if the trucks that go to that site are held accountable. And there is a way, because we have their logs, and we know what, we know what trucks are assigned to that location. It's not just any truck that comes through. Further, the conditional use permit can be taken away if they do not do the things that they need to do, which means that they will effectively be shut down. So it is in their best interest to be good neighbors, because they are making a large investment that could be shut down on them at any time for noncompliance. That is the reason we have a conditional use permit for this kind of a business. Further, if there's any kind of expansion or change to this business, it has to go back to the planning commission. So there's not going to be a change in anything other than what's promised. I understand that there's this disbelief, and there is a belief that they can bait and switch, but that comes back to city staff, and they're having to be very good at making sure that conditional use permits are followed, and that penalties are provided when those conditional use permits are not followed. And I imagine we will make sure that we have a system in place to do that, especially with respect to this project. I understand that the neighbors don't want this at all. I do understand that. But I also know that, right now, there is a lot of dust that gets blown during the Santa Ana wind, oh, Santa Ana wind time, and I don't know how this project actually adds to that. I, it wasn't clear to me how this makes it worse. In fact, it sounds like in some respects, it'll make it better. There will be cameras that will catch people that shouldn't be down there. They will effectively make it more difficult for dumping, that I hear complaints about considerably. I get pictures sent to me of dumping that goes on in that area. And yet, this particular project was conditioned in such a manner that it was supposed to help prohibit that. So I, to me, I see a lot of positives to this. I also know that business owners on La Crosse, when the interchange was being built, business owners were going to lose in-and-out access to their properties. And they went and had assessments done that would determine how much property devaluation would amount to based on the building of the interchange that we now have. And because of that assessment that was done by the business owners, that showed that they would lose property value, and them bringing it forward during the design, that is why we have a roundabout. And so without having a property owner come forward with that information, I can, there's conjecture about it, but I don't know that I can consider that as part of this project, since it's not in front of me, and it wasn't part of this equal evaluation, and it's not part of the three items that we are supposed to look at as to whether we overturn the planning commission's decision. I'm going to call for the question at this time.
Madam Mayor, just to clarify for the record, so the motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution that is titled on the agenda recommendation, and it is, starts on page, packet page 92, and the resolution in short will uphold the planning commission's approval of the conditional use permit and site and architectural review approval, and also the related mitigated negative declaration, and therefore approve the project. Just want to clarify that for the record.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussey?
No.
Councilmember Robles?
No.
Mayor Protem Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor McInnes?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. We'll have a five-minute recess, and then we will come back to unfinished business. All right, item G in our agenda is unfinished business. Number seven, follow-up on Michigan Street update. Planning and Development Services Director, Steve Weiss.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. This is an update for you regarding the Michigan Street walkable complete street plan. What we're doing is we're going to zoom in, one of our consultants from KTA, Tom Bertoulis, who is going to provide a PowerPoint presentation.
Can everybody hear me okay?
Oh, there you are. Hello, Mr. Bertoulis.
So, let's see, someone else is doing the slides, correct?
Yeah, I can run it, I can run it for you.
All right, I'll just say next, when the, when it's time to go next. Great, so, hi, I'm Tom Bertoulis from KTA consultant. I feel like I'm at a baseball game, I'm on the seventh inning stretch, two more innings left. I'll try to be brief. I know folks want to go home. This is my presentation outline. The, there's eight parts, and so people always ask me, Tom, what are the boring parts? What are the exciting parts? And the boring parts, the beginning, the background, the bike corridors, existing conditions, I'm sure most of you already know this, since you live and work in Grand Terrace. Then it gets more exciting, the public workshop, infrastructure options, design drawings, some simulations and photos, and how are we going to pay for this thing? I put little teasers in there, there's an example of a design drawing, an example of a simulation there. So eight parts, going to go quickly, let's go to the next slide. So the background, and this is straight from the project progress report, so you guys know all this already, but Michigan Street is heavily used by students. It doesn't have continuous sidewalks, that's a really big one. It carries a lot of storm water during rain events. It's nice to hear this, there's a planned construction of some storm drains at a couple intersections. And in a bit of exciting news, there's a planned extension of Commerce Way to Main Street, which will shift traffic from Michigan Street to Commerce Way, which is great for us. It gives us a golden opportunity on Michigan Street. So next, so this slide is a goal and has three main points. The first point is we were brought on board to transform Michigan Street into a walkable, bikeable mecca with all these amenities that you can see here in the upper right. Second point is, these plans are going to be leveraged into grant funding, so we can actually build this thing. Should be nice. And finally, my third point is we're developing near-term plans, long-term plans, we're doing something called incremental design. There's a famous 19th century architect, Daniel Burnham, has said, "Make no small plans." I respectfully disagree. We're being strategic about this one, I think. We're going to make some smaller plans that are near-term, and some bigger plans that are long-term. What are those, you may ask, if you go to the next slide? Well, the near-term plans revolve around these protected walking lanes. This is a photo from Seattle, Washington, and you can't see, just outside of this photo, the tree roots have been destroying these sidewalks, and they want to rebuild the sidewalks. But in the meantime, like, well, we've got to give the pedestrians a place to walk, so they created these protected walking lanes as they search for funding for the sidewalks. In the long-term, we'd like to have big, beautiful sidewalks, as you can see in the bottom slide, bottom picture. So next, Michigan Street, as we all know, is in the western part of Grand Terrace, next. And we read to the Grand Terrace Active Transportation Plan, and Michigan Street is an important part of that. Next, the several bike corridors in Grand Terrace, I mean, there's, Grand Terrace has such great bones for a complete active transportation network, and Michigan Street, as you can see here, is an important part of that. Next. Now, if you dive into the numbers of daily trips, walking and biking to work, they're relatively low in both Grand Terrace and the surrounding communities, as you can see in this slide. However, if you expand that to recreational trips, and if you don't, just say daily, just say less than daily, the numbers do go up. In fact, one study shows 34% of Americans ride a bike at least once a year. Basically, this project will be a boon to a lot of people in the community, so that's a good thing. Next. So existing conditions, next. So I went out and did a field visit pre-COVID, luckily, and as you can see, there's lots of people walking the sidewalks, next, walking on the shoulders, next, biking on the sidewalk, next, and yeah, they really like to bike on the sidewalk. They want protected facilities, which is what, what we're bringing folks in this design. We're going to have facilities for beginners, is the goal of this project. So next, so this is actually one of the most important slides in the whole presentation. When I, when we were first brought on board, Sandra Molina said, you know, Tom, what are you guys going to do about the missing sidewalks? And apologies, it's not a great slide. It's kind of hard to read, the red and the green, it's a little faint, I wish we did a better job on this. But if, sort of the gist of it is, so the very beginning part from commercial, starting at commercial, not as many sidewalks that are missing, and way, way bottom, from Pico down to Main, not as many sidewalks missing, but right in the middle, a lot of sidewalks missing on at least one side of the street. In fact, there's that one section near the top of sidewalks that are missing on both sides of the street. And so I have six design drawings, and the first two really dive into that part with sidewalks that are missing. That'll probably be the most interesting part of the presentation, there's a lot of other boring stuff you have to sit through. But everyone wants to know, what are you going to do about missing sidewalks? Well, we try to come up with a few clever ideas. And let's go to the next slide and see what we come up with. So Michigan Street, in some places, it's really wide, like here, next. Some places it's super narrow, like here, next. There's drainage issues, next, and more drainage issues. So that is another, luckily, the company I work for has a lot of landscape architects as well, so we're going to put some thought into this, try to mitigate some of these issues. Next. We did do a public workshop, next. It was well-attended. We had, we had all this data and these toolboxes, like this is one of the ones that people could vote on, their favorite. If you go next slide, here's an example, that's me on the left, and on the right, you can see people putting stickers next to their favorite infrastructure. It was really well-attended, and we got great feedback. It was kind of like what we expected. People want to see a nicer street, and they don't want, you know, negative impact to their immediate yard if they were encroaching to the street, which gets a little tricky, but they do want to see a beautification of their street. So we received positive impact, we're happy with that. Next, this is just more people, they gave us lots of great impact. I'm so pleased with the people of Grand Terrace. And on the bottom here, you can see this map that we created, and we had people, just all these sticky notes, people were like, oh, I want to comment, and they gave us all these comments. And then we put all the comments into Excel files, and I'm going to show you those now. So next, and the Excel files are kind of what you expected. People want to see these separated walking lanes, they want to see these separated bike lanes, they want to see the amenities that we're suggesting, so we were pretty happy with the results. Next. I mean, the gist of it is, people want to see more safety, more comfort for people walking and biking. So we're pleased with the outcome of the workshop. Next. So a few infrastructure options, next. What is a complete street? This is kind of a little bit of jargon, complete street, but it's a street, as it says here, provides safe and comfortable travel for people using any mode of travel. So if you hit next, you can see, includes pedestrian zone, parking zone, biking zone, transit zone, motor vehicle zone. Basically, it's going to be safer and more comfortable for everybody. I mean, it's win-win, it's hard to argue with that. Next. This is just a few of the amenities that occur on a complete street where the red dots are, and, you know, Steve wanted me to keep this relatively short, so I'm not going to dive into every little amenity. We, there's always more time to ask questions and, you know, go through my plans with more detail. But if you go to the next slide, it's, you know, some of the real basic stuff, this is a high-visibility crosswalk, next. These are curb extensions and slow speeds and reduced pedestrian exposure, these are great. Next. Protected walking lanes, and then finally, next, protected bike lanes. And these could be at the level of the street, it can be at the level of the sidewalk, they can be one-directional, they can be two-directional, and they can have different forms of separation. Here you see parked cars and these flexible bollards. You may ask, well, how many different types and numbers of separation can you have? Will you go next? Well, there's a lot of different ones. So if you look at this slide, the number and types of physical separation for separated bike lanes are as number, are about as numerous as shrimp dishes that we learned in the Forrest Gump movie, you know, shrimp and potatoes, shrimp sandwich. If you go to the next slide, you can have planters, rigid bollards, next, flexible bollards, turtle bumps, next, jersey barriers, parked cars, and they're actually coming up with more and more every day. Just today, I heard about a, you know, several more that Circle San Diego came up with. So there's a lot of options if we ever get to this point. In fact, parked cars are something that we did put into our design, it's a very cheap and effective measure for separated bike lanes. So you go to the next slide. So this is the meat of the presentation. I have six slides on the six, you know, designs, or six parts of the street that we developed design for. Again, this is for the near-term, we haven't done the far-term. So here, we'll see the protected walking and protected bike lanes, and then the long-term is have sidewalks everywhere. And the first two slides, honestly, are the trickiest, because they had the, most places where they're lacking sidewalks, they're very narrow, we had to come up with something innovative. And if you look in the bottom-left of the slide here, it says narrow section. I mean, it really gets very narrow there. And what you can't really see in this slide, but there is three very large trees in the public right-of-way, there is a utility pole in the public right-of-way, right next to the edge of the roadway, there is a mailbox in the public right-of-way. So there's a lot of this public encroachment, or private encroachment to the public right-of-way. The magenta lines that you can see here, those are the right-of-way lines, and people like to build sometimes into the public right-of-way, as we all know, leading to some more challenges and the strategies of doing, being, having more incremental design. And as you can see here, there's just a sidewalk on the one side of the street, and then we put bike lanes on both sides of the street. We did do driveway treatments, as you can see photographs in the bottom right. So this is the second most challenging section. The most challenging section is the next slide. So if you go to the next slide, this is it, the most challenging part of the whole project, from DeBerry Street to Mavis Street. And you can't really tell from this, but from any of you who have been out there, there is a huge grade, a grade difference in this street, and right next to it, right at DeBerry. And there's also a wall on the side of the street. So you're basically squeezed between a wall and then a rough shoulder, and then a drop-off. So what do we do? Well, it's kind of hard to tell, but basically, we went with a protected walking and biking lane. So we mixed the walkers and bikers. You can see there, the white painted, and you're just going to have to imagine some bollards, or the other form of physical separation in there. And they share that space, walking and biking, on one side of the road. For the near-term proposal, in the long-term proposal, it'd be great to have sidewalks and raised bike lanes, and so on and so forth. So if you go on the next three slides, they're a little bit easier to deal with, we had more width. Here you see a regular bike lane, and below it, you see another shared biking and walking facility. The next slide, you see protected bike ped lane, obviously future sidewalk, but this is the design we came up with, we're going to protect and put them on one side, two-directional for bikes, two-directional for pedestrians. And then on the other side of the street, there is an existing sidewalk, which is nice. Next slide, parking separated bike lane, you can see here. And then finally, on the last slide, a barrier separated bike lane, and the bottom is a photograph of one, of what that might look like. So those are our design drawings. Now let's go to the simulations. So if you go to these before and after photos of what it could look like, so here's a before, nice wide street, and there's an after. And you can see the, on the left, there's a bollard-protected bike facility. So you go to the next slide, there's a before, nice wide Michigan street, and there's an after, and there's a concrete barrier-protected bike facility with a sidewalk on the right side. So you go to the next slide... So, you go to the next slide, there's Michigan Street, the before, and then the after. There's a bus stop on the left side with some green markings to allow the bus to come in and out, and then on the right side, there's a bollard-protected bike facility with a sidewalk next to it. And then finally, next slide, there's a before, and then the after is similar bus stop on the left, right side, a concrete barrier-protected bike facility with a sidewalk next to it. So, those are the simulations. So, if we go to the next slide, and this is the very end of my presentation, funding, this is just a partial list of all the different grants that are available out there. So, there's one more slide, my last slide. This is page 1 of 7 of a seven-page brochure, basically, we put together, of local, state, federal funding. We don't actually have it in the current scope of work to apply for grants and secure funding. That certainly can be done, we do this every day, we apply for grants every day. We can develop a scope of work to get grant funding for you guys with that. Any questions? You can go to the next slide.
Thank you, Mr. Bertoulis. Questions at this time? Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. Tom, I only really have two questions, and I can see you've done a good slick presentation for a first analysis, and that's good. In that realm, do we have a sufficient amount of data and preliminary design to be able to actually apply for these, you know, grants or, and/or other funding sources at this point, you know, using your experience?
Absolutely. So, in general, what funders want is 30% design drawings, and we're, haven't finished with the 30% design drawings, but it is in our contract to develop 30% design drawings. And so, once we finish that, yes, we'll have enough, we'll submit those, and we'll have enough to apply for grants. So, yeah, we're on the right track.
Super-duper, that's what I was looking for. Then I guess, let me add one other question, and I guess it kind of runs under the technical side. When you put the pedestrian traffic and/or bicycle traffic down in the roadway without a great elevation difference, is there not a way to create some kind of a, say, a four- or six-inch curb that would discourage, you know, lane encroachment? Because I'm just worried, you know, all of us are familiar with elevation differences, and they work, and they work because there's a curb, and it takes a lot for somebody to jump a curb and crash into somebody. So, that's a lot less frequent than, you know, putting them all in the same road and have a silly white stripe in the way of it. So, is there something that used in the past?
I'm sorry? Yeah. So, are you referring to separating the pedestrians and the cyclists from the motor vehicles or separating the pedestrians from the cyclists?
That's correct.
Yeah. So, in terms of separating the bikers and the walkers from the motorists, absolutely. That is what my design does, where we don't want, when I was out there, I saw lots of kids walking in the street, and this design always separates pedestrians from motorists using some sort of physical separation. And I had that one slide that talked about bubble gomp and all the different types of shrimp. I mean, there is dozens of different types of separation, which we will be applying to this, these designs, to keep them safe and to keep them physically separated from the motorists, not just with paint. So, I agree with you, that's a great comment.
Okay, super. And then the last question is, I'm going to assume that when you did this preliminary design, you did some kind of a, basically, a lay of, or in the base for this map must have had right-of-way? Or lack thereof?
So, we did receive, so for right-of-way, we asked for something that was digital, and we got something from, a while back, they were from some Asbils that were paper, and what we did, we did our best to sort of scale those to what we thought was the correct scale, and then we put the right-of-way lines on our plan. So, the six drawings that I showed did have our best attempt of putting down right-of-way lines, and they're in magenta. I don't know if you remember the slides, but I'm sure you'll get a copy of the slides. So, the right-of-way lines are in magenta.
Okay, good.
There's plenty of right-of-way, there's unfortunately some encroachment into the right-of-way, and that's where the issues arise, where it's like, do we want to, you know, bring down trees until they depose or whatnot? But...
Sure.
That's...
Thank you, Tom. You answered my question. Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Might I just comment that this is, this is one of our considerations for our undergrounding fund?
Absolutely, I agree.
Polls down there. I don't know, how many, how many power poles would you estimate that we have along Michigan that will need to be relocated or undergrounded?
I haven't counted the numbers, but in the dozens, probably, if I were to guess.
Okay.
So, maybe we can get a grant for that. All right, further questions? Okay. Wonderful plan, thank you so much, and I appreciate you staying and...
Yep, my pleasure.
This was a really exciting thing to hear, and I love the progress, thank you so much.
That's terrific, thank you very much.
All right.
All right, have a good night, bye-bye.
All right, thank you. So, at this time, we'll vote to receive and file the report. Madam Clerk?
We do not have any public speakers.
All right, thank you. So, we'll bring it back to council when we need to receive and file this. I don't think I need a second if I make that motion.
Second.
Motion for approval, or second.
Thank you. Call the vote, please.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussey?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles? Mayor Protem Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, new business, selection of voting delegates for the California League of Cities Virtual 2020 Annual Conference. City Clerk, Ms. Deborah Thomas.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Meaning that you can attend this conference anywhere in the world.
I know.
Isn't that exotic?
Well, you'd have to have a pretty picture on your computer screen.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council, Deborah Thomas, City Clerk. Before you this evening is the selection of the voting delegates for the California League of California Cities Virtual 2020 Annual Conference. This staff report supports associated council goal number four, develop and implement successful partnerships by working collaboratively with public sector, local, regional, and state agencies to facilitate the delivery of services to our community and to secure funding for programs and projects. The City of Grand Terrace is a member of the League of California Cities. This year, their annual conference is going to be held virtually October 7th through October 9th. Every year, city council is required to select their delegate and their alternates to attend this meeting, although any member of the council can still attend, but they just have to identify who's going to be the delegate and who will be the alternate. In 2018, city council selected their appointments to their boards and committees and commissions, and currently, Mayor Protem Doug Wilson is the delegate for this, for the League of California Cities, as well as Councilmember Jeff Allen is the alternate. At this time, we do not have the voting procedures in place, but we will be receiving those shortly, and once we get those, that will be provided to the alternate and the delegate, I'm sorry, the delegate and the alternate. So, at this time, we're just asking, staff is asking, that city council adopt the resolution appointing the alternate and the delegate and the alternate to the 2020 Virtual Annual Conference for the League of California Cities.
Thank you. Questions of City Clerk? All right, do we have any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, so we'll bring it back for consideration of a motion. Councilmember Allen?
I make a motion that Mayor Protem Doug Wilson remain the delegate and that I remain the alternate.
Mayor Protem?
Okay.
All right, so I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussey?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles? Mayor Protem Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, requests for future agenda items, we do not have any. We did move our council reports to this time. Is there anybody that has anything they wish to report? All right. Very good. Mr. City Manager?
I do not, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, can you believe it? We have closed session tonight. Not one, not two, but three items. So, we will be meeting in closed session to have a conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. Agency-designated representatives, G. Harold Duffy, City Manager, Cynthia Fortune, Assistant City Manager, Adrian Guerra, City Attorney, Colin Tanner, Deputy City Attorney, Employee Organization Teamsters Local 1932. The second item is conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. Three properties, 22317 Barton Road, APN 1167-231-01, 22273 Barton Road, APN 1167-231-02, 22293 Barton Road, APN 1167-311-01. City negotiators, G. Harold Duffy, City Manager, Adrian Guerra, City Attorney. Negotiating parties, Green Group Inc., under negotiation terms of payment. And lastly, we will have a public employee performance evaluation, this late at night, pursuant to Section 54957.6, title City Manager. All right, so, we will at this time recess to close session. Oh, well, I guess I gave you my closed session. We'll reconvene to open session. Council met in closed session. To review, three items. Number one was conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. Agency-designated representatives, G. Harold Duffy, City Manager, Cynthia Fortune, Assistant City Manager, Adrian Guerra, City Attorney, Colin Tanner, Deputy City Attorney, Employee Organization Teamsters Local 1932. Direction was given to staff, but no reportable actions. Item number two, conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. Three properties under review, 22317 Barton Road, APN 1167-3, excuse me, 231-01, and 22273 Barton Road, APN 1167-231-02, 22293 Barton Road, APN 1167-311-01. City negotiators, G. Harold Duffy, City Manager, and Adrian Guerra, City Attorney. Negotiating parties, Greens Group Inc., under negotiation terms of payment. Direction given to staff, no reportable actions on that item. And item number three, public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Section 54957.6, City Manager. Again, no reportable actions, and no, no direction to staff on that one. So, we will adjourn to our next regular city council meeting, which will be held on Tuesday, September 8th, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. Any request to have an item placed on a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the City Clerk's office, and the request will be processed in accordance with council procedures. Thank you to anyone who's still here, and I appreciate all the conversation that we had tonight. We are adjourned.